Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting, a town council meeting for this evening. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Couple of things before we go to the regular meeting. If you look behind you, you're going to see some of our wonderful DPW, probably all of our DPW or most of it. They're here, and so are we, to honor two gentlemen that have been with the town for quite a long time. They both have retired within the last couple of weeks, and I speak of John Tavares and Joseph Pacheco. I have to get their correct names because I know they have nicknames. Wanted to take a moment and just share some information about them. The first one is about John. John started working with the Department of Public Works on August 5th, 1985. After five years, he worked his way up as a landfill attendant, January 18th, 1990. John initially started the Bristol landfill. He helped with the transition to become the Bristol TransFirst Station, which is what it is today. John has been an asset to the department for over 30 years, and that's a really important note to say that I don't think anybody does much of anything anymore for 30 years, so it's impressive. He will be missed. He will be missed on the job, but he's still with us. So, the other gentleman is Joseph Pacheco. Joseph started working for the town in the spring, March 5th, 1980. Thirty-six years on the job, and that's worth a moment to stop and say, "That's impressive to stay in one position, to work for the people of Bristol that long." I have two commendations. I'm going to read them, so just give me a moment, and we'll give them a wonderful round of applause. And I know our DPW director, Kevin McBride, wants to also say a couple of words, and I know our town administrator does, too. Joseph started, as I said, in March 5th, 1980. Thirty-six years ago, he started off in the back of a trash truck and quietly moved into becoming part of the laborers' pool. He continued to become a truck driver, then a mechanic aide to become mechanic number two, and finally retiring as mechanic number one. He's been an asset to the department and will truly be missed. Again, he's still here, he's just no longer on the job. He's been under the direction of six directors and six town administrators. Impressive. Joe has worked through many hurricanes, blizzards, as well as every Fourth of July for the past 36 years. That's absolutely impressive. So if you'll give me a moment and indulge me, I'm just going to read to John Tavares, and these will, these match. "John Tavares and Joseph Pacheco, valued employee of the Department of Public Works for the town of Bristol, in proud recognition of his 30 and 36 years in the service of the town. In making this presentation, the honorable town administrator and the honorable town council in the town of Bristol, State of Rhode Island, and Providence plantations, in accordance with the authority vested in them by the citizens of Bristol, and on behalf of all Bristolians, offer heartfelt gratitude and sincerest congratulations to John Tavares and the occasion, and also, of course, Joseph Pacheco, on their well-deserved retirement." And I think at this point, we can give him a nice round of applause. Kevin, did you want to add? And I know our administrator does, and I have a couple of wonderful pins for you, too. So, Kevin?
If I could just take a moment--
Yeah, gentlemen, can you come up?
Yeah, Joe, you're not getting away with that.
Yeah, you're not. Thank you. Come on.
Fortunately, I don't see John with us tonight, and the fire chief said he may be out on a call for me, so who knows? He's still serving the community. But as a director, you know you rely on your workforce with questions every now and again, and individuals such as Joe and John, when you quantify what they've done, you're looking at over 65 years of experience going out the door this evening. That's a lot of experience. That's a lot of storms, that's a lot of background. In Joe's case, a lot of maintenance, trying to keep our fleet going. So, as the new director coming in, I can tell you that I had relied on him a short time previous to this, and also the short time here since they left. I thought it was me the reason they were leaving, but they told me that wasn't true. In any event, I want to personally thank them for everything that they've done in support of what I have done in the past, and I think the mere fact with the number of Public Works employees that are here tonight is clearly indicative of your service to this community. So, thank you very much, and I'd like to turn it to the town administrator. Thank you.
I'll just stand up. Can you hear me? I think you can. It is with great honor and pleasure--
I didn't think it was going to be so troublesome, but we're getting there. It is with great honor and pleasure that I will award you the town coin for all the years of service. You will be sorely missed, and as was already pointed out, you certainly have provided a great service to us for the last 36 years. So, may God bless you and keep you in good company and enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Joe, come on up. Congratulations. Thank you for all that you did. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, while the Department of Public Works employees are here, last meeting, we commended all our departments after the Fourth of July, and while they're here, before they leave, I think we should give them a round of applause because every year after the Fourth, they do such a wonderful job, and it's a job well done. So, gentlemen--
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here, to commend your hard work and your continued hard work. Was there anybody else that wanted to say anything before we move forward?
I think you said perfectly.
Spectacular.
John would have been here, but he's on the golf course.
I've been informed that John is enjoying retirement on the golf course, and--
So, he apologized for that.
Well, I'm going to hold on to this and hand this to him personally, so, on behalf of myself and my colleagues, so. Spectacular.
Thank you, guys.
Before we go into the normal agenda, I just wanted to bring something up. I've been contacted, probably like a few of us have, in regards to our veterans and their property tax discounts. We've heard this probably all of my colleagues. I know I have multiple questions on it. I'm going to have it, I wanted to bring this up at the beginning of the meeting because I don't need a motion or anything, I'm just going to make sure it's on our next agenda to get a clear idea of what's going on, what changed, what was frustrating on my end of things that I didn't know that we had to change. So, I had a lot of people call up. And what I speak of is that veterans in our community get a discount, like in all of our communities, but ours in particular get a discount on their property tax for their, in recognition of their hard service. And we are the most patriotic town in America, and I can't think of anything more patriotic than a veteran. So, we're going to revisit that, and I wanted to start this meeting off that way because it's important that there's a lot of people out there that we're getting that discount. We're going to look into it, and we'll have it on our next agenda. So, Lou, please, if you would.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to add to the agenda a consideration of the paving at Fairview Drive, for which quite a number of the people who live there have asked us to do something at this point. Perhaps I could come right after Councilman Stewart's item for roads.
So, you'd like a motion to discuss that at this meeting?
Yes, so would I.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move F1 to the consent agenda. Is that right, Lou, or no?
Well, you can just bring it up at that point.
At that point? Okay.
Exactly. I just want to make sure that we have this other one in the right place.
He's going to take care of it. Want to give Lou a moment?
The, just for clarity, the Fairview Drive will be H5, okay?
H5, thank you.
Yes, okay. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to withdraw item F1. Jennifer Evans doing business at Angelina's. I reached out to the owner, and she's looking into do, she's going to continue looking at her business plans, and so she'd like this withdrawn at this point.
Okay.
Do you need a second on that, Lou?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the submission of the minutes of previous meetings, items A1 and A2.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item C1. This is the second reading for adoption, continued from July 8th. This has to do with the overnight parking prohibited. This is ordinance 2015-9, calls for an amendment to the procedures for parking in residential parking zones for overnight vehicles of a certain size.
As my colleagues saw, there was a C1A, which is from our chief of police, Chief Canario, that says that, and I agree with this, there's a lot of conversation that happened about this particular ordinance, on whether or not it was appropriate for weight classes, overnight, such and so forth. Chief, I'm sure that you want to add a couple of words to this, but pretty much what it says here is that he's suggesting that we refer this to the chief and to the solicitor, maybe craft an ordinance that's more appropriate or closer to the appropriateness of what would work for Bristol.
Mr. Chairman, based upon that recommendation, I would move that we refer the matter to the chief of police and to the town administrator, with the intention that individual counselors might provide some further input in the interim.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Chief, did you want to add anything?
I think you kind of spelt it out, Mr. Tavars. That's what the memo indicated. We're looking for some input, and what we're looking to do is design an ordinance that would fit best for our community. As I spelt out here, we had four complaints in the last calendar year. One from one designated, three from one designated area, and the other one was from another part of the town, which was resolved upon the officer arriving there. So, what we're trying to do here is to make sure that we have something that covers the entire town for the right reason, without creating havoc or problems for the average person that's living in this community that has a vehicle that runs a business or whatever, and doesn't create a problem. That's what we're trying to do.
Makes sense. Okay.
I think that might, yeah, it might be, end up being like a model, you know, for other towns, because when I read the document that you all sent, you know, I couldn't help but wonder if some of the other towns were in a similar situation to us, that they haven't updated it in a long time, because we're just looking at like one ton or whatever, you know, and we talked about how much just cars weigh now, and how many people have heavier vehicles. So, I think it would be good to just maybe look at if there is like, you know, model ordinances or model legislation type of stuff out there from other organizations, and see what the state of the art is. I think that would be helpful, too.
And I think that's our goal, is to see what would fit best here for Bristol.
Yeah.
And you're absolutely right. I mean, they're all over the place, as you can see. I took a poll of about eight communities, and not one of them are alike.
Yeah, and I think they're just, I think they need to, probably will look to update it, probably as a result of looking at it, too.
We'll work to get you something in the very near future.
Great.
Thank you.
I think one of the elements of this is the issue of whether or not such a dramatic change from up to seven tons would perhaps inadvertently encourage businesses that ought not be conducted in residential zones. And perhaps as part of this inquiry, we should examine that issue.
I think you're absolutely right, but we need to keep the two separate, because if someone's running a business in a residential zone, we're going to deal with that. If they're parking a vehicle that doesn't belong there, we'll deal with that.
Yeah. Well, either way, I think we're going to correct, the most important thing is that we could correct that ordinance the way it should read for even the one or two tons that's not existing in the ordinance now, so. Either way, correcting this has to be done, so to get there, we'll make the modifications.
You're right.
Any other discussion? So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item C2. This is the second reading for adoption. This was for the municipal court cost change that we discussed at the last meeting.
Make a motion. We approve the second reading for adoption, ordinance 2013-11, chapter 2. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item is item C3. This is ordinance 2015-12. This is the second reading for adoption of the ordinance to deal with outdoor open burning.
I took some time, the chief and I, Chief Martin and I spoke the end of last week, and the Phoenix shared a portion of the full story, and the full story on this one is the chief's goal, which is everyone here's goal, which is safety. And this ordinance was a cut and paste from our neighbors in Barrington, who do a great job, but the cut and paste had some concerns that didn't necessarily reflect all that we were looking for in Bristol, and all that the chief was looking for in Bristol. I asked him, and I think it's appropriate, and I'm looking for the council's indulgence on this, to refer back to the chief, the town administrator, and the solicitor to craft an ordinance that maybe more reflects what we're looking for in Bristol.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with that, because I, like probably others of you, have had some kickback on this. I've had a number of calls. One lady in particular said they've had the opportunity to cook for the children in this way for many years, and she wonders if the change could be done in a more moderate fashion so that she wouldn't be cut right off from that. And also, it seems to me that in reviewing this, we could take a look at whether or not we could differentiate between anticipated and requested new pits as compared to those that do exist. In other words, maybe it would be fairish to gradually phase out or diminish the ones that exist, and then treat new requests more stringently.
What was interesting, and certainly we're going to table this object, but what was interesting is that the ordinance actually didn't say it had to be X amount of feet, it was the size of the wood that could be burned in there. So, without going down into the weeds and down the rabbit hole, simply put, is that we do want to review this, and it's going to go back to the chief, and as we talked about, the administrator and the solicitor, and we'll review it and craft something that meets Bristol's needs. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, excuse me. I'm sorry, I know I asked for that. Did you want to share something?
I would, if I could.
Sure.
Take a couple of minutes. Mark Dietrich, 23 Naomi Street. I happen to be someone who likes to come and do it in person rather than make a telephone call, so it's one more person you can hear from. I'm in the situation, I think one of you, I don't know who was identified in the article, is that I have an existing fire pit done by a mason, looks great, you know, one of the ones with the inner steel ring, and it wouldn't be legitimate under the, what I read in the Phoenix anyways. So, that's one of my concerns, is that, you know, I'm looking at big money if I need to shrink this thing. The second one is, and I may be unique here, maybe not, I do actually, I cook with my fire pit, and I, you know, I typically need enough room. I run two Dutch ovens and a feeder fire in my fire pit, and I need room in order to do that. I totally understand what the chief, I think I understand what the chief is after, and I support the goal, you know, we want safe fires, but I've spoken with both my neighbors, you know, I've never bothered anybody, never gotten any complaints from them. I reached out to both of them. And I'd also argue that I can, in a, you know, one-foot fire pit, I can build a fire that's just as obnoxious as a five-foot fire pit, and I can also build one that's just as dangerous as a five-foot fire pit. So, I just encourage you to think about how people are using these, not put arbitrary limits on them. I mean, I totally understand, you don't want people burning trash, you don't want people, you know, lighting doors on fire, you don't want huge bonfires, but I actually use my fire pit, and that's the main thing I wanted to say, is actually cook with it. It's, you know, when our house is hot, we're out there cooking in it because we don't have air conditioning, so. And just another piece of information you want to think about is that some of these are actually used, so.
Good point. Thank you.
You have a question I'd like to ask you. Would you be willing to let one or two of us come by and witness what you do as an example of the usage of these?
Are you looking for free food?
I wouldn't ask for any of the food. When's the next time you're cooking out there?
If you require sampling, I'm able to do sampling, yes, but I mean, both the entree and dessert we look at, or just, you know?
Very accommodating, sir. Very accommodating.
Hi, I'm Renee Chicanelli, off of Diamond Dab. And we also have a fire pit that is a permanent structure, and according to the newspaper, it doesn't fit the two, less than two feet, I think it was, requirements. But we had a fire, somebody from the fire department come out to check it, and they said that it was safe. They gave us some safety tips with having a hose out by it, having some, you know, water there, making sure the fire didn't get too big, keeping it away from structures, you know, not having trees within 10 feet of it, or however many feet, and we were all within the limits of what they had suggested, and we are pretty responsible with it. You know, our neighbors have never complained, and we also, you know, use it every weekend, and we do, you know, our kids do marshmallows and, you know, stuff like that, and it's just, it's something that is a permanent fixture, that we would have to spend quite a bit of money as well to make it in the regulations of what the Phoenix was proposing.
So, great news. We're certainly going to review all of this again. You're not alone with your concerns. I'm going to reiterate this one more time, because I think it's important, is that the goal is for safety, so we'll review this, and we trust in the chief and the fire department, and we know that we'll come up with something that both gives us safety and enjoyment, too. So, no question. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks for sharing your thoughts, too.
And item C4, this is ordinance 2015-13, that changes the makeup of the membership for the Historic District Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we consider this a second reading for acceptance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate my point from the last meeting, and I'm not sure, you know, how best to handle this. I mean, I don't know if maybe our solicitor has some thoughts. I'm very concerned, I understand the point is that we can't always find people who live within the district to serve, and so a property owner who owns, you know, somebody who owns property could take the place. But I am concerned that this could go in a direction that there's no one from, who lives in the district, and there's no provision in here with this change that would say at least one person needs to be. So, I don't know if this is something that we come back to, or we look at on a yearly basis to make sure that we're, you know, I know we appoint people, but we don't always, you know, and we don't always have the people, but I just am very worried about, and if we don't have it in the statute that, or in the ordinance, that it just won't happen. And I think it makes a difference if you live in the district on a regular, if you live there. I mean, everybody, whether you own property in the district, or you own property and live there, you're subject to the rules, but I think it's different when you're actual resident day to day, so.
I just want to remind everybody what we're speaking of, which is, we wanted to make a change, or there's a proposed change, I should say it that way, to the Historic District Commission shall consist of seven members, which it does currently, who reside in the town, again, that's current, and at least two, and preferably three, of whom shall be residents of or property owners in a historic district. So, the change here is to open up the candidate field, is that we've had some challenges getting new members for it, filling in whether it's auxiliary members or full-time members. So, the goal here was to open it up, but your concern, Mary, I think is all of our concern, is that it's important that the person who's making the rules has to live by them, too. Is there any other discussion? So, we have a motion and a second to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd be opposed. I'm opposed.
So, that's four to one, four.
Same as last.
Thank you.
The next item is item D1. This is continued from July 8th. This has to do with the request for a modification, the expanded Class BV license service area for the Bristol Oyster Bar to include specifically a service bar. You have a recommendation provided by the town administrator and chief of police.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Peter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Pete, we know who you are. Could, if you could state your name for the record?
Sure. My name's Pete Sebring, owner of Bristol Oyster Bar.
Thank you. So, there's been a lot of discussion about, well, we spent a lot of time in our last meeting and prior meetings to this. We have a recommendation from the police chief, and I'm just going to go right to you, chief. I know that you gave us some great rundown here, but if you wouldn't mind surmising it for all of us, I can, I certainly read it, and I know my colleagues did, too, but just for everyone else, if you could give us a summarization of what you're looking for.
I think, as you can tell, I spelt it out in the memo, what my concerns were for any of the outdoor, to start off with, storing of alcohol, on how it would need to be housed in a closed-in area where it'd either be alarmed, and audio or video, both to the structure. I think I showed you a few other places in town, how they bring the alcohol in and out every night. That seems to work very well. These businesses have been in existence for quite a while. I'm very comfortable with that, that protocol that they follow. I know that there is one that was pointed out on Thane Street, but as you know, that's a high-visibility area. There's a fire station right across the street that's occupied quite often. There's fire personnel that are in that area, and many sets of eyes. The patrol vehicle driving down the street has a clear view of that closed-in structure. That's my main concern, is where this alcohol will be stored after hours when no one's there. I think that's something that we need to very closely monitor with this establishment and any other establishment that may want to move forward in doing something like that. I think that's why I had the officer take the time to spell it out, go down and take some photos of the other establishments, so there won't be any questions asked, and we're not trying to hinder this gentleman from running a business and doing what's right for his customers and for the community. However, my concerns are where the alcohol will be stored after hours and how it will be controlled, and I think it spells it out clearly there, on how we could prevent any of these situations from taking place.
Hats off to Patrol Manapi for this. This is very, very clear.
Excellent report.
Thank you, so.
I have no issues at all with storing the alcohol inside. The beer, wine, and liquor can all be put in the cart brought inside, put in the coolers, and--
You're supposed to be more difficult, Pete, if you wouldn't mind arguing with us, we'd appreciate that.
But as far as the storage of the liquor, I have no problem at all with storing inside. There's other equipment, coolers, and some electronics and stuff that won't be coming inside. I will have it secured with cameras, probably not an alarm, but it will be very, very well secured with locks and cameras.
Right. And that is for both your protection--
Yeah.
--and obviously someone that may not be--
Yeah.
--looking to do the right thing--
Right. Hopefully, with no liquor in there, it'll take a lot of the incentive away.
Right, deter them from thinking the way they shouldn't be thinking.
So, to remind everybody, we've, this council's already approved the expansion of the liquor license, which means that liquor can be consumed on the patio area once he hits all the parameters necessary by the police chief and the fire chief for safety. The question in front of us is whether or not this can be a service bar, and just for clarity's point, a service bar means you can't sit at it. You can't, as a consumer, go up to that service bar and get a drink. Only Peter or anyone's service personnel can go up there, and so there wouldn't be somebody sitting there. You can't, or I can't, or anyone can't go up there and ask for a drink, whether it's a Coke or a beer, it doesn't make a difference. That's a really important point, because part of the magic of Bristol is its character, and I believe that the oyster bar enhances that character, and that's not a qualified statement. It really does. I think that all of our restaurants enhance Bristol. One of the concerns that we do have as a council is that we go too far down the road, and chief and I, Chief Canario and I, have had multiple conversations about this, about at what point do we go too far? At what point is it too much? We have a very efficient force, and we can only do so much with it until we need to hire to hire more. It's not an argument not to say yes. It's the point to say that, at what point do you say no? I am, I had some major concerns about its initial placement. What I speak is the structure. Now that it's on the side, this is, and also another important point, is that this still is pending approval with HDC.
Correct.
In English, that means that they still need to say its placement is appropriate, its structure is appropriate, the height is appropriate, the color is appropriate, such and so forth, for downtown. So, our approval would still be pending their approval, once if we said yes, or if we say no, I suppose that the next step wouldn't be necessary, so.
Mr. Chairman, based on the recommendation of the chief, and I agree, the safety is number one. I understand where everything, and everything you say makes a lot of sense. And Peter, you've been a very good sport. I think you, I trust you. I think you're going to do a good job. I am making a motion to approve the service bar, with the condition that he brings the alcohol in each night.
Yes.
I second that motion. And also, Mr. Chairman, as you stated, Mr. Sebring, as a business owner, has gone above and beyond, even after our last meeting, his discussion with the Historic District Commission, and along with myself and my colleagues, on any changes to help his business, and help this community in the fashion that we're looking for. And I just want to compliment you on that relationship. So, that's very good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask the chief a quick question? And that is, I know in the memo, there were two thoughts. One is obviously bringing the alcohol in, and I assume that that, you have no problem with the, any type of alcohol? Because the other option was to limit this to beer and wine.
Right. I was giving you the options, and just allowing you to know exactly what's taking place with the other establishments that have been in place for quite a while, and I feel have been doing the right thing. And I have no qualms believing that Mr. Sebring's going to follow suit with them. He's been very accommodating to the officer, as that went down, spoke with him. I had a brief conversation with him, and I think we're all on the same sheet of music. However, this is a trial basis, as Mr. Herschoff always says.
Yep.
You know, if there is something that we see that's not fitting our requests, we're going to let the council know, and we'll take the appropriate action at that time.
I think the question that the chairman asked, or, you know, sort of hypothet, you know, rhetorical question of where, when is it too far down the road? I mean, my concern, and it's not anything to do with this specific business, I just feel at this, at this point, and I don't know what I'm going to, how I'm going to vote on this right now, but I feel a little overwhelmed, I don't know if that's the right word, with the amount of liquor requests we've gotten in the last couple of meetings. It has been like astronomical, and when you start seeing like coffee shops that want alcohol, I mean, I just, I don't know where it's going to end, and where it's going to, and how we're going to put a halt to it. I think the, the horse is out of the barn, so to speak. I think we've already gone too far, and, you know, it's easy to be Monday morning quarterback, and to look in retrospect and say, maybe we've gone too far on this, but, you know, so I understand, you know, because the whole, every discussion, for all the years I've been here, is always parody, like, my neighboring business has gotten this, so now I need to be competitive. And then, they get something else, when now I've got to be competitive with that. And that's how we've gone down this long, you know, this path. And so, I have very serious concerns, and I, and it's not reflective on you, I just want you to understand that. And, you know, the fact that this is, in this particular one, you know, not if you, if you're going to bring it in, it's going to be different, I think. But because it's kind of going to be like in a little dark corner, in a small alleyway, in the middle of a very busy area, like, I can see for your own, you know, like, trust me, you know, if you, and I think the chief could bear this out. There's certain times in like May, and in September, October, it's, it's crazy down here at night. And I can see kids just going right in there, pushing that open, tipping that old, that cart over, doing whatever they could to get in there. And, and I think that's been my concern, from the beginning of you even having like something as big as this. I think, as I mentioned before, you know, when you first brought this proposal to us, I think we all, at least I envisioned something very different. You know, maybe like a table and an awning, and you have some shucking going on, and, you know, and then it's turned into this whole, like, outside bar. And so, like, I, I think of all the establishments, certainly the one on Thame Street is worrisome, but as, you know, there's lots of cameras on that, there's lots of police down there at this particular, late, late at night, when there's, I don't think the trouble's going to happen with your patrons. I think it's just after hours, you know, when you're going to be closed, so.
With, with that said, Councilwoman Perella, if you go inside this structure, as you stated, that it's tandem not only for a service bar, but it's going to be for the shuckers for the oysters, by the time he puts the equipment inside, this, this pretty much, it's not as big as, and I think even the roof line might come down, I'm not sure. So, it might even become smaller, but by scale, it does look large, as you stated, but inside, for what he's using it for, it's, it's kind of tight, so. Even after he did some accommodations of, you know, we took away a lot of his storage, because he's going to box it in, so there's not a lot of openings for pedestrians to have access, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make some remarks, initially similar to what Mary says, that I think we're on kind of a steep ski slope, going down to a point where we might end up allowing any kind of liquor, any place, and any time. And I think we have to put some brakes on that. But more specifically, first of all, I'd like to say, Peter, that you've been an absolute gentleman about all of this discussion, which we all appreciate. And we certainly don't want to, as the chief has pointed out, do anything to harm your business. We want it to prosper, as it certainly seems to be doing, and it's a good addition to Bristol. However, in this particular matter, you have, for one thing, called attention to Aiden's Duolfin, Duolfin Restaurant and Lobster Pot. Well, now, in all those three cases, the bar which is outside the door, is under a roof that's part of those buildings. Furthermore, in all those three cases, there's an immediate door that goes straight in, and that's one reason why they're unable to store the liquor inside. There's a flip side to referring to what may already exist, and that is, that if we were to okay this, a separate bar, somewhat away from the building, visually and practically seeming to be on its own, we're going to have a lot of other places all around town coming to us and saying, why not us? How can you grant this to one place, and not to us? And I don't want to see that stream of people coming in the door and asking for this at this point. And I've been opposed to this element of the proposal from the beginning, and I continue to be. Fine to shuck oysters there. Fine to make it part of your establishment. Okay to have drinks at the table there, but they should be brought from inside, in the way that is conventional, not only in Bristol, but in many towns and cities, that liquor is brought from an inside bar by waiters and waitresses to the patrons, and I think that's the way it should be. There's another difference between this proposal and that of Aiden's Duolfin Lobster Pot. In all those cases, the positions that are referred to are kind of in the back, and not only integral to the building, but they're off the street, they're not even visible from the street, in any of those cases. Whereas your fine establishment is right in the center of town. We consider the intersection of State Street and Hope Street to be the center of town. You're one block from a very prominent church. We have lots of children along that stretch of the sidewalk. And to have a bar right in their face, as an element of this town, I think is a mistake. And so, I cannot vote for this. I don't believe in it. And I think we've got to take a slow step in how this all evolves, not only for you, but for the whole town of Bristol. So, I'm not going to vote for this.
Andy, you wanted to add something?
I do. I've got a couple of things. I, I just was going to echo the chair's comment about that HDC approval is still required. The HDC has given conceptual approval to a smaller building, lowering the height and the location, but still has to give that approval. The second question is, I want to note, there's been reference to another establishment, and since we've been naming it, I'll, I will name it, Aiden's. And also, Duolfin Tavern appear to have seats at their bars, and we are in the process of investigating whether that was or was not properly permitted. The problem, I think, is a different definition of service bar between the town authorities and restaurant people, as a term of art. We define service bar as where just the waitstaff will go and get the items, rather than people. Some of them appear to define service bar as they can serve people there. So, we're, I just want to point out that the fact that the police officer took photos of the Aiden's location, and that it's been referred to here, in no way indicates that they are necessarily operating legally or illegally. We don't know. We're just, we're investigating that. Which, which brings me to a suggestion which I have raised with the chair, and my thought, I, I think, in line with also with Councilwoman Perella's thoughts, and everyone, I think now is a good time to think about having a comprehensive look at this, for, maybe not wait till November for the renewal, but start in October for the annual renewal of the licenses, and try to have a comprehensive review of what do we really have? Because we all kind of drive by places every day and don't notice things. What do we really have going on here? And then, that philosophical debate of where do you want it to go, so that all the establishments would be put on sort of a fair footing at once. And then, finally, if you do decide to approve this one, which again, this would only be in, this being an alcoholic beverage license, would only run till the end of November, anyway. But I would just suggest, rather than a specific, I think the motion had, was going to have one condition, I would ask that you include all the conditions on the patrolman's report that is there, as well as the conditions on the list that were set forth before you by the applicant at tonight's meeting. I would request all of those conditions, rather than just the one big condition that you're all concerned with. So, add that, add these other conditions to the condition of removing all the alcohol every night.
Councilman Sweeney?
So moved.
Is that reseconded? Mr. Stewart?
Second.
Okay. I had conversations with you, Pete, prior to this meeting, and I'll share, what I shared with you, with everyone, is that I'm hoping a year from now to look back at this and say, I'm very proud to say that we said yes to it. And I also shared with you, too, is that I'll be the first one to, if there is a concern, and not just for you, for anyone, obviously, we wouldn't point you out, but to, to talk with the chief and ask him to do what's necessary to, if I see it, and obviously, if his staff sees it, then they'll take care of it. Because what has been shared by Councilman Perella and Councilman Herschoff, it's a real concern, I believe, for all of us, is that I think we're going in a good place, but it's very easy to go off the rails. It's very simple to say one more, and then one more, and then one more, and then all of a sudden, we have issues, and we, it's like herding cats at that point in time, so. But I believe, in my heart, that this is a good, what you're asking for is appropriate, and I also believe that we'll need to review it. When do you plan on, on having, assuming that there's HDC approval, what's the next step? When is the first person sitting out there and service, if it's approved?
If there's HDC approval, it should take me four or five weeks to get all my contractors back in there, get them to finish the work and everything, so, as soon as I can after that. If it gets into late September, I'm going to have to rethink whether it's worth opening this, this season, or whether I wait until next spring. But it all hinges on HDC.
I would ask my colleagues, then, that if we are, if the, if this does get approved, then we set up a review period in the spring, then, as opposed to now, so we have an appropriate amount of time to take a look at everything.
Could I just ask, Andy, one quick question? In, I believe, when you refer to all of the, you know, added aspects and requirements, you were talking about this particular page, am I correct? Where it starts with video surveillance? The only reason I'm asking that is because there's, if you adopt all of those, and we may just want to make sure we delete that one. The last one was that Mr. Sebring stated he was looking to go operational with the outdoor seating in the spring of '16. I mean, if that's what we were talking about, including, we just want to make sure we delete that, in that, in the motion, right?
Right. Yes, I'm looking at the second page of Patrolman Nappi's report, and it is the 1, 2, 3, 4, the top five bulleted items there. And in fact, might be better, if you want, I can just state for the record the conditions with.
Please.
So, first condition would be, as discussed, that no alcohol may be stored in the structure overnight. It must be removed by closing time, at closing time each night. Second, video surveillance capabilities of adding three cameras. Two employees behind the service bar at all times. No access for customers near the bar. The entrance and hostess are at the front of the building. The rear door of the indoor restaurant, near the outdoor bar, is to be for employees to run meals in customer restroom access only, and for handicapped access. I think that's something that would need to be added. And if needed, an employee to be stationed near that rear entrance door, directing customers to the front of the building, and away from the outdoor service bar. In addition to which, I think we'd leave the size item out to the HDC, but permanently close both ends of the service bar. Have a permanent back wall. Have it be totally lockable at night, even without the alcohol. And removable fences, fence slash poles and line to create an avenue for access from the patio to the restrooms slash restaurant.
Anything else?
And then, the final one is, this will be a service bar only, which means no patrons may be served in any way at this service bar. Only staff of the restaurant may utilize it.
Okay. Is there any other discussion in this council? Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to, did you want to add something? Just real quick, if you don't mind, if you want to come up real quick?
Before you, please, well, George Berman, Highland Road in Bristol, gentlemen, good evening. Let me just add a word, because on behalf of the Economic Development Commission, of which I'm a member, I'm not speaking for the whole commission, but I think it's absolutely important that we endorse what the chairman has just said. You know, we have to give a sign that this town is open for business. And we, by refusing simple requests like this, I think what we're doing is we're giving the exact opposite sign, and that's been our problem. And that's why we've got so many empty storefronts, and problems on the economic front. And I'm just astonished that we're spending this time even discussing it. Thank you, sir.
You're not going to get your liquor license all the way out. I don't think that's a fair thing to say.
So, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
So, that's a three to two. Four approval.
Congratulations, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is the petition of Suzanne Mark, doing business as Bristol Sweet Shop, 577 Hope Street, requests council consideration for a holiday sales license. You have the recommendation provided by the town administrator and chief of police.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Bristol Sweet Shop on 577 Hope Street, based on the recommendations of the town administrator and chief of police to approve.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item D3 is the petition of Cyril Scotty, doing business as Loda's Blue Farm, with a address in Matunick, requests council consideration for a Hawker's Peddlers license, and you have the recommendation of the town administrator and chief of police to deny.
Make a motion to deny?
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Any other discussion?
I'd just say, Mr. Chairman, and I consider that it's our obligation to support our own Bristol businesses, why should we bring in somebody we don't even know from way outside to compete with the legitimate, good businesses here? So, I think it's a very bad idea to have this sort of thing. So I think it's a very bad idea to have this sort of thing.
Me personally, I think it's a good idea, but unfortunately with the applicant, due to the information we had gotten, it just wasn't clear that they really knew what the Hawker's Peddlers license was all about. I mean, it was a little bit confused, but.
Well, it's, it's to the point of our standard ordinances that I have been advocating for food trucks, but in their own platform, the way they should be. And the way it was requested by not only this entity, but the others that have been before this council, that is why they have been denied, is because of the format that they want to do their business here in this town. Maybe it should be thought to have what other communities have, such as a food truck festival or by that means, but I think amongst my colleagues, everyone made a good point, but the way the existing ordinance reads, they're just not meeting the criteria.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion to deny carries. Thank you.
The, the next item is the request of Wood Street Laundry, 259 Wood Street, requesting a public laundry license. You have the recommendation of the town administrator and the Department of Water Pollution Control to approve.
Based on those recommendations, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The, the next item is the petition of Michael Ferreira for Coastal View Incorporated doing business as Guillory's Tavern, 198 Thames Street, request council consideration for transfer of the Class B V liquor license to John P. Ferreira for Thames Hospitality LLC doing business as Dirty Water Pub. This will be new ownership. Call for a public hearing on August 19th.
Make a motion, we'll call for a public hearing scheduled for August 19th for the transfer of license of BV intoxicated beverage license.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would just like to say that while this is a rather thick submission, it's unclear to me exactly where he's going to serve the liquor, and I think this needs to be a little fleshed out. And I just advise that to the applicant that he review his application and make it clear to us exactly what they're going to do.
Hi, I'm Michael Ferreira, owner of Guillory's.
Good evening.
Good evening. The, the new owner, he isn't present. I don't know what had happened. He texted me something, but I don't understand your question. The bars have been in the same place for years.
There's a reference in here, the fact that the serving of the alcohol will be somewhat different than presently. So I'd like to know how different. And the sketch of the interior with some vassal, it doesn't quite answer that question. So I'm simply suggesting.
Can I just take a look at it?
No, actually, we're going to stop, and here's why, is that because we're just calling for a public hearing, I'm hearing Councilman Harrisoff, which is great, kind of forecast what he's looking for at the next meeting, so, so as opposed, we don't have to deal with it right now, certainly, so if, whatever question that's being posed right now, make sure that we address it at the public hearing. And that way, you're comfortable in Councilman Harrisoff and the rest of us, obviously.
Well, that's exactly it. I'm not going through the merits of this now, I'm just saying as a piece of advice to the applicant, let us know exactly what is intended when the public hearing is held.
I'll make sure I tell them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to call for public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Also from Mr. John Ferreira for Thames Hospitality, request council consideration for a 2:00 AM closing license. That would be an additional public hearing also on August 19th.
Motion to move the public hearing for the 2:00 AM closing.
I see.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item is item E1. You have request for a renewal of private investigators licenses for the next year. You have recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police to approve.
Upon all recommendations for the 2015, 2016 license renewal for private investigators and of course, Lou, I'm going to say, those that are checked off and until the other applicants submit their application, they can be approved upon those conditions.
Yeah. Based on those conditions, I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
The next item is item G1. Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, this is the public service appointments. The first is G1A Historic District Commission. There are three applicants, three slots, with terms to expire in July of 2018. You have John M. Allen, Orianna Lima, and Jessica Doyle, all seeking reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to reappoint John M. Allen, Orianna Lima, and Jessica Doyle to the Historical District Commission.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Yeah, one second of discussion. We talked about this at the last meeting. We have some open positions at Historic District. If you're interested in this position or any other position in town, reach out to any counselor, the administrator, or anyone that you know in town, ask some questions. We appreciate your input. We also appreciate these three fine people putting their name in and continuing to serve the town of Bristol, so. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Thank you.
The, the next item is the Board of Tax Assessment Review alternate member. This is to fill the unexpired term to expire in December 2016. You have the requisite recommendation from the chairman of the Democrat Town Committee, Mr. Marshall, who suggests Diane C. Mederos to fill that slot.
Upon the nomination of the chair of the Democratic Committee, I move to accept his recommendation of Diane C. Mederos to the Tax Assessment Appeal Board.
I'll second.
I think it's great that Diane, with her terrific record of service, is willing to carry on.
Yes, I agree.
Very good.
Please.
It's nice to see you're back there. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town councils, item H1, first item under old business. This was continued from April 29th, and it is an agenda item where Councilman Stewart requests Medicom Avenue traffic study update.
Well, with the events of this past week and the week before, due to the weather and trees, we see firsthand, not only with flooding, but tree matters that puts a halt to Bristol residents and commute on Hope Street and the redirection, even though our fine police department and fire department, all departments do a great job. But this is a main concern of public safety, not only with our ongoing work with the watersheds that cause flooding for street closures, in discussion with the town administrator once more, and upon a further reach from Representative Ray Galison to DOT, and the ongoing process that is at its final stages upon our community of development director Diane Williamson with the DOT with the intersection of Bayview, intersection of Chestnut and Anawamsket, and the intersection of Tupelo and Michael, on the expansion of those intersections and turning lanes and new signal lights. We have to see about the whole width from the Town Warren Line all the way to the Monho Bridge. Upon talking with the chief of police, and especially on the day of 4th of July, as he puts a middle lane with the cones, we need to see how much we can allocate that and present to the DOT to come down and survey to put a middle lane into Medicom Avenue. Not only if something should happen, not only if something should happen, but our personal rescue personnel has to have an outlet, and if there's traffic jams, we need our rescue personnel to function in this town, and also to accommodate the residents and motorists of when people can free up a lane and just go into another lane to turn into a street and make the traffic flow more better for, so I think we're going to schedule that meeting upon with my colleagues and the administrator and DOT and the director and the chief going forward, along with Diane, and have them come down. So that's the update for the Medicom Avenue.
I clearly recall having conversation about the tolls and that excess cars coming our way and what were we going to do when all of that car slowed us down? And then not just one, but two trees. And as Councilman Stewart mentioned, the fire department and police department were there right away, but we had to wait for the state to come. They have to have their tree people. I don't say that jokingly, is they have to do it that way. What I say with frustration and immense frustration is how long it took and what it did to this community. And Chief, I'm sure that you'd like to expound on that one, but maybe we can't share that in public, but it's really, and I joke, but I'm serious. It was extremely frustrating to be shut down for, for something like that.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And unfortunately, as you just stated, having two main arteries in and out of this community puts us at a great disadvantage. Experiencing that, where I pop a squash at Hope, it couldn't happen at a worse place with the nursing home there, needing to get apparatus in there, needing to get employees there. That tree limb that came down was extremely large, took the power out to those homes in that area. And after call to call to call the DOT, to National Grid, approximately four hours later, before we were able to open that main artery back up, at eight o'clock in the morning, when most people are trying to get to work and other people are just trying to get into the community. I can tell you that I spoke to the director of DOT myself, forwarded him an email with some timetable of exactly how the events unfolded. He assured me it wouldn't happen again. I will tell you that the second time around, there was definitely an improvement. Within an hour and change, we were able to open the road up. So we're just looking for some cooperation. I think they understand our concerns, and anything we can do to improve the efficiency of the traffic flow in this community, I'm all for. So I appreciate your support.
Thank you.
So with that said, I don't know if, Tony, you have something to say? No? I'll just continue this for two meetings, and by that time, our communication with the sit-down with all of us with the DOT, we could just do a report back two meetings from now, Mr. Chairman.
Beginning of September would be that next meeting, I believe, so.
Sure.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
September 9th.
September 9th. Thank you, Lou.
So we have a motion and a second to continue this to September 9th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Also from Councilman Stewart, the update of the road improvement program continued from June 10th.
Late afternoon yesterday, myself, town administrator Texera, and Director McBride was, was in the conference room in the back, talking about this road improvement plan that we've been discussing for months now. It was only fitting that while we were having the meeting, we had a tropical depression move in and a downpour, and we're looking out the window saying, wow, you know, our crumbling roads, but not only crumbling roads, but everything that's tied in with the roads, that we're trying hard for our future, for the sustainability of our town, is what I had mentioned, is drainage, which ties into our roads so they, they could be more sustainable, so that has to be taken care of first. And also our watersheds, which Diane has been working on with the administration in this council and past councils, because those three items tie in altogether for the future of this town. And I don't want to berate it, I'm dooming gloom all the time to the residents of the bad news of the cost associated with this. A cost that was on paper with Bader, who did studies years ago, and unfortunately, they're going to have to come and re-study the assessment of the roads going forward on the priority matters of the scheduling, not only this summer and late fall, but going forward year after year, because this is going to be a multi-year plan. As we stated last meeting, there's going to be another bond referendum, because we need the funding mechanism to fix our roads, because everyone who's in this room and everyone looking at home and in this town knows that their road is bad. So yesterday, we did talk about the priority scheduling, so there's a bit at the end of this meeting that we have to go over. Once that bit goes out to the contractor, he will come in the end of this summer and early fall to do the initial streets that are on paper that we discussed in our initial preliminary meetings. And then we're going to keep meeting so we can expedite starting next spring, so we're not so late, that the RFPs in the study with Bader for the next priority of roads going back for 2016. Again, this is millions and millions of dollars, and we can't ignore it, and I just don't want to, you know, be the bad news to the town, because we have so much to be proud of, but we have to fix our drainage roads and watersheds, just to have a good future for our town. And Tony, if you want to add something to that?
Yes, actually, in, in contact with National Grid, you know, just along the lines of the roads, because people do say, you know, look, I'll bet my road is, any road that National Grid is currently doing work, and I know in particular there's Gibson, some folks have alluded to that, but there's quite a few others, but any road that they currently doing work, they will do the right thing going forward, you know, in paving the road. Let me specifically address Gibson, because that has been the bigger issue, and it will continue to. Speaking with the folks in National Grid, they assure, well, they told me, there has been some issues with pressure to reach the Highlands. So in order for them to continue to monitor through the engineering process, it will probably take the entire summer for them to figure out exactly how they will get enough pressure, not just to the Highlands, but to some of the finger roads off Gibson. So people in that area need to be somewhat patient, more so than any other area. That being said, I know Councilman Harrisoff brought up Fairview, that's another one. They actually will be doing, that will be paved next week. They're going to be back in town to do Goring Avenue. They have to actually mill the area that they actually had patched. They will mill that area and redo the entire area, and also they will do Fairview as well.
But Tony, aren't they going to be doing, is all the construction done as far as the sewer plant project? No. It's going to get dug up?
The gas? No, there's actually quite a few roads, and I will have a list of those for you for the next meeting. There is quite a few roads that they actually, Union Street is one of them.
No, I'm talking about the Fairview.
Oh, sorry.
I'm talking about Fairview and the sewer project that we're going to do there.
That's correct.
That's not done yet, right?
No, that is not done.
Because people were asking me about that.
Bader is still working through the engineering for the, all the work that we need to do there, the drainage for the, the plant, which obviously will incorporate Fairview as well.
So I just, just, I mean, I know that road absolutely positively needs to be paved, but is it going to be dug up again in the very near future for this project, or is it going to be a while before the project gets done?
Well, that, that's what's in question. Right now, it's going to take some time, because we've got to get all the permitting. And permitting is not going to happen in a month's time. And the concern, in speaking with Director McBride, and we are concerned is about the winter time, when it comes time to remove the snow.
Probably won't be next spring.
And also for the folks that live in the neighborhood there, with the, the manhole covers and so forth. It's, it is a bit unpleasant to drive through. I've gone there, in fact, I was there this past weekend, just to see how the conditions were there, and it is. It is somewhat, I mean, they could be patient if we knew that we would be doing this by the fall, but that's not going to happen.
Okay, yeah.
You know, so that being said, we have the winter time coming around, and we're going to make sure that they taking care of it.
No, I totally agree with that. I just didn't know if it was going to be like this fall project, but it looks like it's going to be a 2016 project, so.
Most likely it'll be springtime you're looking at.
You said a key word is patience, and that's what we ask each and every one of you, is this is a multi-year plan, so I know everyone wants their road done first, but in our discussions yesterday, the meeting, and as Director McBride mentioned, that first the drainage has to be assessed before the road gets replaced. And with that said, the first phase on the north side of Medicom Roads up for Butterworth, there's actually two streets that got pulled from the project because of drainage, because if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right, and allocate our money towards something that's going to last. So that's one critical point. Another point we talked about was, so my colleagues know, is whether it be the bond referendum going forward for next year, that's, we already have before the, the next bond that we'll, we'll give to the voters, is put a cushion for such overruns in any construction, because the administrator brought up a good point, that throughout the year, emergencies happen. A, a road could just collapse, and then, you know, this council has to find the money. So maybe we can, because it's part of a road program, put in a cushion, so we can have that money already allocated upon emergencies every year going forward, along with the priorities in the road program that year. Also, the patience that's tied in with it is, we know that through the winters, we're going to have potholes, and after a year, the, the asphalt comes up from the potholes, and DPW has to go back out and fill the potholes once again. So do, to do the Band-Aid process in between the road progress, is, we had a discussion, Director McBride had mentioned a new process that we're going to be discussing, along with a presentation from Pothole Killers that has the contract with the state DOT, and look for options to expedite the potholes for our residents on a daily basis, so at least that's taken care of along the process. And with that said, I, I would. And with that said, I would move that we're scheduling maybe quarterly meetings, or even more depending on needed. So, we'll just give a report back in October.
So, you want to move this, you would like to continue this item till October?
Yeah. I just feel we give an update so far, that what is pending will be done, starting in a little while after this bid goes out, and we could go from there.
Well, I think that you and the administrator and the DPW director and the committee seems to be doing a really good job to try to, I think we all concur that we want to get it done right, so that we're not constantly digging it up, and it takes a lot of coordination to do that, because, you know, and, you know, the parts that's within our purview is one thing, but then when you start getting National Grid and these other people, you know, hopefully they're going to work with us to be able to, you know, make sure that we are coordinated in that way.
Actually, National Grid, in discussion with them today, is that they hope that we can provide them a two-year schedule, what to do, so that they can anticipate and also budget themselves, so they can do the upgrades as necessary.
So, they're willing to work on a project jointly?
They certainly are, as well as for the county water authority.
Yeah, the water authority, yeah.
It's also been, it's a focus too, that we're looking at our ordinances that we currently have. One of them, which is sorely lacking, is what we require our utility companies to bring the road back to wet level, whether it's compaction, whether it's myriad of things. We don't have to go down that road right now, but I think we need to tighten that up a bit, and we will tighten that up a bit. So, when repairs are done, then we have an expectation, it will be there tomorrow in five years, not just next year after the plow goes over it, so.
And I just want to say kudos to Councilman Stewart and the new director, Kevin, and the administrator, you know, and when it rains very hard, like it has been in the last couple of weeks, you know, we get a lot of text messages with various roads that have, they just get flooded out, and it's frustrating sometimes, because you want to be able to help, but you can't. And I think this plan and the different initiatives that you guys are moving forward, is putting that plan in place, so we can give people the answer, and we know where we're going, instead of, you know, just saying, putting Band-Aids on things and putting out fires. So, I'm looking forward to the update in October. And I'll second the motion, Hattie.
And I think the thing, you know, too, if I may, the, I can't remember how many years ago, though you might have an idea, but, you know, when we put the last big drainage bond out, I think it goes back, I think Richard might have been on the council at the time. I mean, I think we knew at that time, so that could be like 10 years ago, that, I think we went out, I might be wrong on the numbers, but like, say, 6 million. And, you know, we knew at that time, it was double, triple, quadruple that amount, but that was like the first phase. I mean, this is like massive money, just on the drainage side, and that's not even going to touch everything, you know?
Right.
So, I mean, we've been fortunate in getting some grants to offset some of that, so we've been able to do more. But, I know that you have talked about, this year, this past election, we didn't go out for bond, but I think that we're going to have to in the next election, probably.
Yes, absolutely.
And then after that, and after that, I'm just, I don't want to scare people, but we're talking millions and millions of dollars.
And beautiful roads when we're done. So, it's a necessity.
Well, I think it's not just, I mean, I think the roads is like what we all see and we all drive on, so that's what we know. But it's like the whole infrastructure, you can have a beautiful town, but if it's all crumbling around you, it really isn't, you know, much to be proud of in that respect.
I concur, Mary.
So, we have a motion and a second to continue this to our October meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item, also continued from July 8th, has to do with the request for tree removal by Linda Jones of 15 Curtis Road.
I spoke with the applicant again, and there was a request from the tree warden and our DPW director for more specifics on the plan, so I'd ask that this council make a motion to continue this until we have a plan.
So moved.
Second.
So, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Next, from, continued from July 8th, also, the request of Brian Ferreira for the addressing of Beatrice Lane situation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Brian Fer.
Thank you.
No problem. I just wanted to first say thank you to Diane for going into the meeting minutes and getting the information from 94. I appreciate it. So, we're just here, obviously, to continue what we talked about in the last meeting. As far as the recommendation, it seems to be set fit for us. Obviously, it needs to be reconditioned, and I actually looked at it to see if it needs to be widened and whatnot, and then you also just brought up drainage, and I think that also needs to be looked at as well. Just due to, I don't know if you looked at my original petition, it was more than just the road that was an issue on that, you know, in that area. There was a tree removed that was on town property, it was probably a over 100-year-old willow tree. And at that time, I know Sam Kinder was the arborist for Bristol, and he wasn't the one that was removing the tree, it was another arborist. And I got a phone call stating that the tree was getting cut down, so I went up to the person that was cutting it and asked him why it was being cut down, and he could not give me a complete answer. And then I also, you know, came to the town to figure out what the problem was and why it was removed, and nobody knew anything about it. So, I never came to the town council regarding this issue, just because I tried to take care of it without, you know, bringing an attention to you guys, because you have a lot more important things to do.
Not necessarily.
But, I tried to take care of it, other options, but didn't really work out. They did some work on the street due to the tree removal, because I, you know, came and complained multiple times. I just was looking for, you know, maybe multiple trees throughout that area, just to off-shade what was done. They had DePont go out there and pretty much whittle through a $10,000 budget of putting big rocks, maybe even probably a third or a quarter of the street, and then they ran out of money, and now it's just overgrown mess. It's not even taken care of. So, it's pretty much, in my eyes, just a waste of money and time. So, like I said, I'm just bringing up other points in the area that are concerns to me. There's only two, three neighbors on that street, so that's all you're going to see in front of you, is two or three people. It's not like it's going to be a big, you know, a bunch of, group of people coming up to just tell you what's going on in the property, because there's only three people on the street. There's also a piece of property that's adjacent to Beatrice Lane, that is grandfathered as a junkyard, but is obviously not doing that. They're obviously subletting it out to a landscaping company, which we've called multiple times to the police, and they've gone there a few times, because they were running a generator 24/7. And then, that was, came to an end, when the police went over there and took care of that. But then recently, within the last month, there was a fire on that property, and there is illegal structures.
I should stop you there.
Yeah.
And the reason why is that this particular, your agenda item, that we continue is a narrow spectrum.
Yeah, it's kind of veering off, so if you want to maybe make a motion, I can make another petition to sit in front of the council again.
Well, actually, before we do that, I was, I wanted to ask our DPW director, Mr. McBride, to maybe speak on this. He gave us a, as you saw, a recommendation.
Recommendation, yeah, exactly.
But we can see it, a lot of you can, so I'd like you to hear it out loud.
Sure.
Thanks, Kevin.
No problem, thank you. Based on the discussion that took place at the previous council meeting, I went out there to take a look at the physical conditions of the roadway. In addition to Diane Williamson did some background research on council minutes and approvals, it appears that, based on the council minutes, that the town agreed to install a surface course on the road, and I'm not sure what the conditions were leading up to that, that's quite frankly irrelevant at this point. The existing physical conditions of the road, as stated by the homeowners in their petition, has deteriorated. The southern portion of that road has deteriorated quite a bit. I mean, it's, you know, it's spider-cracked and deteriorating. No physical drainage system in the road itself whatsoever that I could see. Again, it's the town's responsibility to maintain that road, and in my opinion, we need to put it on the list with everything else that we're doing. As far as widening the road, I do not recommend that we widen the road at this point in time. It's problematic because of the grade changes adjacent to the road. And when we go in to fix that portion of the road, it's not just a simple overlay, a pavement overlay, we have to actually excavate and remove all of the existing bituminous pavement, do pavement cores and soil samples on the subgrade to determine whether or not it meets current town spec. If not, then that's going to come out, and then we rebuild that road. So, there is a fair amount of work that needs to be done, you know, relative to what the homeowners have brought before the council. I think I covered that pretty well in my notes to you.
Thank you.
And I think that it certainly, you know, what they refer to as the town's responsibility is on record.
So, if you recall, three weeks ago, when you were in front of us, you said, what are you going to do? And we have a fine DPW director, we have a fine community development, we have a lot of fine people.
Oh, definitely.
We actually pointed out two of them at the beginning of the meeting, who are no longer with us, right? So, retired, that is. We are focused, I just want to keep pointing that out, it sounds like they've left us, and I don't, you know. This is, like all of the roads and streets, important to us, but there's no question that there was agreements made there, and I don't hear any objection from anyone saying that there wasn't an agreement made by the town. We've had a lot of discussion about roads this evening, and they're not over. I think that, I can't speak for my colleagues, but certainly, you've been waiting a while on this, and it seems that there was something that we should have been doing, so it should get, as our DPW director has suggested, on the list, but not necessarily on the list. I think it should get priority on the list. I think you've been waiting long enough. But, I think it's really important to point out, too, that there are levels, I think we have to look at this like an emergency room, and there's triage. And I'm excluding you from this triage scenario or analogy, but there are really bad roads, and some of them just happen, and maybe your road has been kind of bad for 10 years. We have to do the bad ones first. So, it's not about who got there first, it's about which roads are the worst, and we rely on a multitude of people, including our DPW director, to give us guidance in that regard, and of course, a lot of other people, too. So, I excluded you from that analogy, I think we're all on board as saying that you've certainly had all the, you should have been done a long time ago. How's that? Simply put.
I understand.
So, I think it's appropriate, and I don't know what my colleagues think, that we refer this to the DPW director and the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town, get this on the list and get it moving.
Well, I just want to congratulate you gentlemen for, you know, making, you know, remembering what was agreed to, and coming forward and making sure it gets done, because I think, when you said that it was the agreement and it had never been done in all these years, I mean, I think that's, you know, that's not a very good situation for us to find ourselves in.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate that you came forward and that you, you know, hold us accountable to what was agreed upon, because councils change, planning boards change, and, you know, different staff come and go. So, it's important that we do what we say we're going to do in those agreements, because we expect those other contractors to do what they say they're going to do.
Exactly.
And so, yes, I, was there a motion? Because if not, I'll make a motion, a second, and if not, I'll second it.
Go ahead and make that motion, please.
I would refer this to our DPW director, to, and the administrator, to work on, you know, in as expeditiously as possible. I understand it's going to be on the list, and it's going to get, but as priority attention to the degree that it possibly can, so.
I just don't want to get, you know, the overlooking of the drainage issue also that's there.
See, and that adds to the complication of the project, as you know.
Exactly. So, that's going to hinder a lot of things as well.
You know, it's not, like I said, it's not just a pavement overlay.
No, I totally understand that, yeah.
It's a lot more in-depth than that.
Hey, Kevin.
On the southern portion of it.
Southern portion, yeah. The northern portion was done.
The northern portion is in pretty good shape.
Kevin, when we say pavement overlay, we're talking about, normally, if the road is kind of rough, we just pave over it.
Well, what we would do is mill it down, like what we don't want to, we'd mill down about an inch and a half to two inches.
Make it nice and smooth.
Take that out, and then replace it with an inch and a half, two inches of brand-new surface course.
But in this instance...
That road is not one of those...
An inch and a half left, yeah.
Pull the part, yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think when we say the road, we mean the entire project that needs to be done.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll second Mary's motion, I just want to say, I'm just glad there's a light at the end of the tunnel for you.
Yeah, exactly.
It looks like we're getting to resolve a longstanding issue.
Yeah, it's been a longstanding issue, and...
I think you should keep in touch with the DPW director.
Yeah, definitely.
You know what I mean?
Well, what I could tell you is that we had a meeting today with Grid, as the town administrator mentioned, and we're trying to build the road program plan for the next two years. And the reason we're looking at two years is, we know what we'd like to do next year, but it's important for Grid and any other utility, that they have our plan for two years out, so they can do their work next year, and then when we come in and do an overlay, our roads aren't touched, you know, because they've had a failure, or they've got to go in and cut and patch and everything else. So, we're trying to get to that point, but with the degree of complexity of this small little road, it's not just an easy pavement overlay.
No.
So, we have a motion and a second, but I know there was a little bit more discussion, please.
Yeah.
And please state your name for the record.
Wayne Millett, to Beatrice Lane.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I appreciate you guys addressing this and, you know, actively pursuing it. I've had a few conversations with the town administrator, and he gave, he had told me that he was going to put a work order in to at least patch the road until this was fixed permanently. I'm still in the situation where the kids can't ride the bikes in the street, because there's craters, holes, it's down to the dirt. Alls I'd like to do is ask that that happens somewhat before the end of the summer, so my kids can enjoy the road in front of their house, and we can drive the cars down the road and not kick dirt and rocks up all over the vehicles. But, I, you know, I understand we're going to be...
I'm going to put Kevin on the spot right now. Does that sound like a realistic request?
I don't know about the summer, the end of the summer, especially because of all that drain engine.
I'm not sure I was clear enough, that the road is not a candidate to do what he's trying to do. It makes no sense. We're throwing bad money after a bad situation, or good money after a bad situation, and I don't think we're going to get any benefit out of that. It will bust up pretty quickly shortly thereafter.
So, we're committed to making it whole?
My recommendation is a full-depth reconstruction of that segment of the road.
Okay.
So that it lasts into the future, because what he wants to do, it's just not going to last. It, you know, it's like pothole after pothole, it's all spider-cracked now, and it's falling apart.
Right.
I put patches in that, it's just patchwork. There's nothing to adhere to or to maintain any sort of integrity for the future. That's my recommendation. Should the council or the town administrator desire different, I'd be more than happy to go out to the road and discuss it with you. That's no problem.
What is your, what do you think might be like a reasonable timeframe to get all of that? I know it's a lot of work, and I know it's a lot of money involved, but I mean, it's...
It would have to be added to another contract that we would put out to bid, because the specification requirements would have to be added to that for a full-depth reconstruction of that portion of the roadway, similar to what we're going to do on Blue Boulevard. Pavement cores were taken, there's going to be a full-depth reconstruction of that. And that's a similar type road. You can see what we've done to patch that, and how long does that last?
I can't believe that. I've been down there a few times, I cannot believe what a disaster that is, and, you know, people come here and say, just as an example, and I shouldn't get off on a tangent, but I will for a minute, you know, we're not economic, we're not being friendly to businesses, because we're not letting liquor licenses go through. Take a ride down Blue Boulevard, where we have several businesses, you can barely get your car down there, I don't know how anybody could possibly get trucks down there, and it's embarrassing, it really is. And I mean, so, yeah, I think that's like a high priority to be done, and it is so crumbled, and it's so like that one section, you know, heading towards the south, yeah, it's crazy.
But, that's, you know, look at that in a similar fashion as Beatrice Lane, because if we, if we just do that patchwork, you know how long that lasted and it wasn't very long. If we do that for this portion of the road, it really, it won't last the season. I'm sure of that.
I mean, I think we appreciate your situation with your children, but I think you're, in the long run, everybody's better off if you just let them do the whole job.
I agree. I'm just imagining what the road's going to be like after another winter of plowing. It's going to be a dirt road. You know, driving brand-new vehicles down the road. I didn't, you know, I don't live on a dirt road for a reason.
We feel your frustration, so we're going to get it taken care of. So I think we need to follow the DPW director's suggestion, which is just, if we do anything, it's just going to get pushed away and washed away.
I'd actually tell you, I would love to say to this gentleman right now, we're going to get to it within the next couple of weeks, but I can't make that promise. It's just not, we haven't got there yet.
Okay.
But the conditions warrant it.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? So we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
This was the ad item regarding here when you drive.
Ah, yes.
Well, thank you. I think that's all taken care of, thanks to the town administrator's good plan to get it paved. I would just make a couple of remarks about the future there. I had understood, I assumed in the beginning that this line that won't go until at least next spring or next summer to drain the wastewater treatment plant, I thought that would be a three or four-inch pipe. I understand now it's only going to be a 24-inch pipe and they think the engineers deem that enough. And I'm just wondering if possibly that could be put in the grass area to the side of the road so we don't have to dig it up again. Just a thought. And of course, if we did do that, there would need to be maybe some laterals to the other side, but I think a small lateral can be shot under a paved road. So that's one thought to consider that do that. And as the town administrator said, the holdup on that is design, but particularly permissions to get down that roadway and across the street and into Walker's Cove. And I think it's going to be a very good project eventually, but not till next year.
So what's your motion on this? Is just a, do we need a motion on that? No? Okay. Thank you.
The next item is the correspondence from Eugenia Marks, the senior director of policy with the Audubon Society of Rhode Island regarding the Green Infrastructure Coalition website.
Diane, you want to comment on this?
No? It's okay.
All right.
So we have a motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Third.
And a third?
Third.
Okay. Belt and suspenders. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is from Councilman Harrisoff regarding proposed streetlights.
I'm suggesting three streetlights in this memorandum that I've sent to the council. Rather recently, some new poles have been erected on Monkey Ridge Drive, which is down on Bristol Ferry. And it's advised to me that it would make sense to put some streetlights on those poles. One of them could be adjacent to the entrance to the Sisters of St. Dorothy, which has always been a very dark area. And I think having a streetlight there would be an asset to that organization. And the other one could be put on a pole down where Monkey Ridge Lane makes a sharp 90-degree turn to the right at the bottom of the hill. And that's always been a very, very dark area. So I'd like to suggest that the administration and the public works consider whether that would be a good idea and make a judgment about it. And then in addition to that, I propose a streetlight at a place which I must admit has quite a lot of purpose for what I do on Burnside Street. There used to be a very bright streetlight on a pole that is a little ways into Burnside Street. But when that pole fell over and was replaced, the streetlight was not made to work there. This pole is now labeled VZ1. And I admit that this is self-serving, this particular element of the request, but I would still like to ask that you consider the prospects of that because that's also a dark street with a lot of children and other people there and having a streetlight would be very good. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that this memorandum of mine, I too, be referred to the town administrator for his evaluation and reply hopefully in three weeks.
May I suggest that we include this also with our grander plan with the streetlights, looking at where streetlights belong and maybe the some that we can get rid of? So include this as part of our larger project that we're undertaking if that's.
I think it makes very sense because, you know, I certainly wonder if we don't have some streetlight locations around town, like at Burnside Street, where we're paying for lights that don't exist. And so we certainly need to determine that.
And those are the dimmest lights of all, aren't they?
Second the motion.
Yeah.
I'll third it.
Just give a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next correspondence from the executive director of the Coastal Resources Management Council, Grover Fugate, providing notice of the public hearing to be held on August 18th and the proposed right-of-way on Old Ferry Road, just for the council's edification. That's the day before your next council meeting.
Make a motion to receive and file?
Second.
Motion to receive and file and there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next from Councilman Sweeney, providing the tip, excuse me, the occasional follow-up on the recycling committee.
Thank you, Lou, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to do a quick background for the residents that are watching tonight and the residents that are out in the audience, give them a brief update on the recycling committee. The Bristol Recycles Committee was formed more than two and a half years ago in January of 2013 at the request of then council chairman, Mary Perella. It was noted that at the time that educational outreach was a logical first step before implementing any policy or ordinance changes. We have kept your honorable body informed of all of our actions and progress along the way as we have shown an increase in our recycling rates of approximately 4%. We have, for more than two years of hard work and dedication from an all-volunteer committee, submitted our recommendations to you at a workshop on May 18th to decrease our waste and collection costs and increase our recycling rates. In your agendas tonight, you have many documents. I'm not going to go into all of them because Keith is going to handle that. And you have an ordinance before you that the solicitor has reviewed. I want to note that the projected 2016 savings from implementing all of these changes is At this time, I'd like to introduce Keith Maloney, the chair of the Bristol Recycling Committee, to give us a brief.
Thank you.
Give us a good word, Keith.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chancellor. Counselor Sweeney, I appreciate it. Again, Keith Maloney from Griswold Avenue.
And if I may, please give you.
Thank you.
Summary of what my comments will be so that you have them. I've been asked to be brief.
Thank you.
So I will.
Thank you. How about I give Lou one, some of that?
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to give you something to put on your vehicle. This is an important sticker that I think is very important to reinforce the message that we're trying to deliver, not just.
I got one, Keith.
In the town of Bristol, but throughout the state of Rhode Island and everywhere else. If we don't respect our environment and start doing this stuff, we've got real problems. That's our gift to you.
(laughing). And as you noticed, the.
I want a T-shirt.
The triangle, which is the universal symbol for recycling, is in the red, white, and blue of Bristol, personally made for that area. So what lies ahead? Point number one is we are going to be facing an increase in our tipping fees on July 1st, 2017. They will go from what is today $32 a ton to $65 a ton. That's a doubling plus a buck of those fees. That's coming down the road at us right now. We know it. We've got a plan for it. We have gone through lots of analysis and we have with us here tonight Kristin Littlefield, who has been working with us. She is from the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation. She's been very helpful in providing data and analyzing our requests. And we have simply four points that we want to make. Number one, we feel it is imperative that we create a separate and distinct account for commercial waste. Today, the commercial people in our town, good, good people, fine, but they're businessmen and that commercial fee that they are charging or being charged is the same as any resident. It's not appropriate. It's not appropriate. And with the help of the DPW, we know just the five biggest users, those commercial construction builders, whatever they are, users, in 2014 brought 721 tons to our transfer station. 721 tons, one year, five commercial users. Just take that out and Ms. Littlefield can tell you, if we create a separate commercial account, those tons will not count against our residential cap. So take that out and the number is $23,072 just on those five accounts. Now, we do not know, again, the DPW estimates that there are 100, thereabout, commercial users, but they're all folded in with the residents. They have to go through and analyze and pull them out and separate them. But 100, so if five are 721 tons, who knows what the big number is? But it's significant dollars. Number two, again, we think it's fairly straightforward that any and all public events held by organizations on town property must recycle. They have to contact the DPW, work with the director and/or his designee, get the barrels there, do the recycling, collect them, et cetera. Again, taking all of that out of our trash, thus reducing our tipping fees. Number three, and if there is a controversial piece of our recommendation, maybe it would be this, but we believe it is a step in the right direction. And that is to create and implement a new no-bin, no-barrel, no-option policy in the town of Bristol. This has been implemented in 13 or 14 other cities around the state. It essentially says if you don't put out a recycle bin with your trash bin, then your trash will not be picked up. So it requires you to put one out. Now, people can say, "Fine, I'll throw one Budweiser beer can in there and that's it. I meet the criteria." Yep, fine. But that's not what people will do. That's not, I mean, come on. They will get it. And we understand that there is also the question from an earlier analysis that was done, that we have 80% participation. Great, we have 80% participation, but what does that mean relative to the multifamily units that are not being counted as there's six residences in there, not one? So one trash, one recycle bin doesn't work. It has to be six and six if we're going to really capture our recycling. And that means we have to communicate very significantly to our landlords to help them understand what their obligations and requirements are in order to get their residents within those multifamily units to participate in the program. Last but not least is the obvious one, and that is we must rewrite the ordinance for the town of Bristol on trash removal so that all of this is in fact incorporated into a new ordinance. We have done a proposed, recommended ordinance and submitted it to the town solicitor. Again, we would, by the way, we recommend that all four of these actions be implemented as of January 1st, 2016. That gives us plenty of time to communicate this to the public through a variety of different measures, that we would take, the committee volunteers to take on that job, working with the town administrator and whomever, the director of Department of Public Works, to inform our residents through the use of water bills, church announcements, door-to-door handling, articles in the Phoenix, letters to the editor, whatever it takes, we will get it done. And I sum it up by saying that Councilman Sweeney and I met earlier this week with town administrator Texera and DPW director McBride and went over the logic behind all of these recommendations and they are supportive of our recommendations to you. We thank you for the opportunity to present it and we look forward to your support of these recommendations. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a few questions?
Of course, yeah.
Just to clarify a couple of things for me. On the, you know, the commercial account, I mean, that seems like a great idea, but there must be like another side to this. What is the opposing side?
Well.
Why wouldn't we do it? I mean, it seems like common sense.
We will be, we will be charged a higher rate by Rhode Island Resource Recovery.
For the commercial?
Which, for commercial. Which we would pass along. And we think that that's perfectly appropriate. This is a business operation that they've had a pretty good deal for, with, for a very long time. And if they should decide not to pay that extra fee, fine, then they can't dump their trash in Hart City. They can't dump it here. And as Director McBride has also said, which he mentioned in our meeting earlier this week, do we know where this stuff is coming from? Somebody does a roof job in Tiverton, fills up his truck, brings it over and dumps it in our refuse, so we pay the tipping fees. So taking care to recognize where they're coming from, that they are residents to begin with, that this is from work that is taking place in the town of Bristol, all of this has to be evaluated, but I think it's putting the price in the right place, not on the backs of every resident who lives in town, which is, which is now.
Going to end up paying it one way.
We're helping them to make their profit because they have a very low-cost budget on getting rid of their trash.
Well, what's the difference in price between the, like, the residential and the commercial approximately?
Is it $100? I mean, what, oh, it's currently 100, that's correct. 100 a ton for both. We would recommend that go, you're going to charge us 125 or 135?
Kristin, could you come up? We would go from 125 to 150 was the recommendation, I believe, in the proposal.
Kristin Littlefield, Rhode Island Resource Recovery.
Welcome.
Thank you. So our fee for municipal solid waste is $32 a ton, which your commercial trash goes under that right now. And our commercial fee is $54 a ton. So I suggested that you increase your tipping fee at your transfer station by that amount, which would be 20.
From 125 to 150 is my understanding.
I think your fee's 100 and.
100?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're at 100, so that 25 extra that we would be paying to Rhode Island Resource Recovery should make the fee at least 125. Now, I am recommending, we are recommending, that instead of just making it 125, where we're now break even with our cost, that we make it $150 so that we create a fund to support future expense, whether it's buying vehicles, buying 90-gallon recycling bins, retrofitting the trucks with the automatic arms to, however we go forward, we build a little extra in there and I don't think it's unreasonable to add that fee to cover the expense. But that's a decision you guys have to make.
Kevin, you wanted to share?
Yes. Couple of things.
Director McBride, you wanted to share, excuse me.
That's fine. One of the things that concerns me, Councilman Perella, is the fact that as a town, we have reached our cap this year in the end of May. So we're already paying.
Right.
A higher rate. We don't separate out the commercial trash that we need to do to help us stay within the residential rate, residential cap, to keep our costs down. When we, when the fees get bumped and doubled in two years, we're going to be faced with a very, very high cost if we don't start looking at measures to control our costs on both the commercial side and on the residential side. I think we need a soup-to-nuts assessment of our fees. Honestly, I don't think right now is a good time to talk about it because it's fees in general. I mean, we're talking commercial versus residential, but we've got to go further. We're talking about implementing programs to reduce our trash, which is increase the recycle rates. Our recycle rates for the last two months were about 19.7 and it bumped to 20.3%. I mean, we're not seeing a big jump. So with the no-bin, no-barrel, I think Kristin will tell you, we're looking at a, you know, around a 4%. That's still not enough. So, we need to be looking strategically and looking out five years from now, what are we going to do when two years from now our rates double? So, and I only throw this out because we really, really need to start looking at this and develop a strategic plan forward. And that's, that's just me. I'm the guy that executes the plan that gets approved by the town or by the council. I just, I provided some input to the committee, to Councilman Stewart, Sweeney, relative to some of the recycling and what the guys face on the ground, so that we make sure that they're not forgotten when we do all of these procedures. But we really need to do something as a town because the costs are going to get a little bit ahead of us, and we're not going to be able to catch up. And that, that's what concerns me.
Right, no, I think we're familiar with that aspect. I just wasn't as familiar with the commercial end. I was just curious, it sounds like common sense, but you know, there's always another side to it. That's what I was trying to clarify. I had one other question on Keith's presentation, and then I have a couple of questions on the draft ordinance. I don't know when we're going to get to that, but on the required recycling at all events held on town property, I'm curious why you put in town property because many that are held on private property, like some, like some of the churches that are on their own property, come to us for liquor licenses and for special event licenses. So, I think if you're going to do that and add that stipulation, then probably it needs to be on everything. That's my suggestion.
I would agree.
And I do have to comment that I was, I was, I can't say that it wasn't there, I don't know, but I did work two nights at Mount Carmel, and I did not see the recycling...
There was nothing there.
You know, there. And I was kind of surprised by it, mostly when I went to throw out things, you know, like my water bottles, but, so...
Right now, we're dependent on the organization notifying us. For instance, if you were at the Columbine Fathers Festival, we recycled. They called me and said, "We want to recycle." We contacted Director McBride, they delivered the bins, we put them out, they picked them up. It worked. So, if we had known about the Mount Carmel thing or gotten a request, we would have done the same thing.
But it all, you know, it's not, not to belabor the point, we all knew because they came here to get a okay, to use the comments, so, you know. And so does St. Elizabeth's come here.
You would put it right on their...
Their license.
Application, so that it's automatic.
Right.
One of the things we have found too is if you don't have the trash bin next to the recycle bin...
Oh, yes.
Nobody's going to walk 50 feet to do the recycling. It needs to be co-located. I mean, it just is what it is. And we found that out this year recently during the Fourth of July and all the events surrounding that, so we need to pay attention to that as well.
Right. And I did work with the Mount Carmel feast on the recycling, and worked with Don Durfee, and he was, he requested one bin, and then he was working with the group, and they were handling the recycling differently, but they were going to recycle it. But he requested only one bin from our DPW, but it's just, again, that, you know, that communication we brought up there, which is good. Just having consistency.
Yeah, yeah. Well, those are my questions on Keith's presentation. I'm sure we're going to get into, are we going to get into a further discussion on the ordinance because I have a couple of questions?
You have the floor. Why don't you go right into the ordinance?
Okay, well, so, there's just a couple of things that I was curious about, and one of them is, this is like just a little, little point, and that is on page five, number 11, where it says, "Provide for the collection of mixed recyclables and solid waste." I mean, I don't know if we should just put something in like that we follow whatever Rhode Island Resource Recovery is, because, you know, they went from separating them to mix to, who knows if they changed that again, to, I don't know what, but. And then my other one that was a little bit larger, just, this might be a question for Kevin. I was surprised to see, I was under the impression that local residents could go to the transfer station without having to pay a fee for just like, you know, if for some reason you were out of town and you missed getting your trash out, if you had like a bag of trash and you wanted to throw it out, or some recyclables without having to pay, that you could just go up there. And I thought when we changed that, that that was always a provision that was in our records. Is that not the case?
There are allowed three one-day passes for the year. I think that's what you're referring to, but that's all part of what I said, that we really need to do a complete assessment.
No, I'm looking at number two on page eight, under section 24-77. I just want to make sure that that, that's not changed at all, just wanted to make sure of that. And the other is on the budget, you know, it implies, well, it doesn't imply, it says that we're going to have a coordinator, recycling coordinator...
Oh, yeah.
That's going to work at DPW. I mean, I don't know that we've decided that we're going to hire a new person. I think that that would have to be something that...
It would need discussion?
Right. In would be maybe within a person, you know, within somebody's job description or...
Agreed.
You know, a part-time person, but that struck me, and then I had one other.
We discussed that, and you were supposed to get a revised version of the ordinance with that removed. We are not recommending it.
Well, if it went out today, it was out of all the...
Okay, so that's it. It is not part of our current proposal.
What section, I'm sorry?
I don't even know what that section is. I just remember reading it somewhere, making a note of it. Yeah. And the other thing that, you know, I have a sort of semi-issue with the no-bin, no-barrel, no exception policy, in that a lot of people do do it, I mean, and I'm not sure that, what I see people having problems with is not putting the right things in. So, I think there's a lot more that people could recycle than what they are recycling. I do think, I do, with all due respect to, you know, Resource Recovery, I do read like the Sarah Kite column, and I'll tell you, sometimes you just want to say, "Okay, this is like, there's just too many rules." You know, like, I can do it, you know, if the pizza box has this much grease, I can recycle it, but if it's this much grease, I can't recycle it, and I got to rip it apart." And I mean, you get into all these details that I think when people look at it, they go like, "Oh, my God, I'm just going to throw this thing out." So, I think, I think, I really do believe that that's a bigger issue of how do you get people to recycle more items? But I mentioned at the, I think at the workshop that we had, one of my concerns is that, I've just from my own personal experiences, there's no provision in here with the exception of the director, but I don't even think it was clearly stated anywhere, that if you just can't get it out, you know, and I'll give you my own personal experience, for two months I had a very bad shoulder injury. I did the best I could to get my trash out and to get my recycling off, but, you know, my trash is on wheels, my recycling, I have to lift it up. So, what am I supposed to do? Get an exception and write a note on my trash bin for those like two months that I wasn't maybe able every week to get that out? I mean, I think those kinds of things, ice, getting it iced in the, in this winter that we had, where is the provision that somebody can get an exception? Like, I really take exception to the no exceptions ever because that's just not realistic for a lot of people.
Well, I, I think it would be fair to say that we want to communicate no exceptions because it's like the police chief would say, you can't say it's okay to speed some of the time, okay? Everybody would. But the good judgment of our DPW director and his people there, if you have a problem, you make a call, I think things can be managed.
I don't think that I see that clearly stated in here. I think there was some reference to it. I can't imagine that everybody who's got a problem is going to be calling DPW director on a regular basis. I think his office is going to be inundated on any given day, but I don't know that that is clearly stated in...
Town Administrator Texera, Councilman Sweeney and I visited the East Providence DPW, which had implemented a no-bin, no-barrel, and they said for the first two weeks, they got a lot of phone calls. After that, zoop, and what was critical about it was that they stuck to their guns. No exceptions. Now, somebody hasn't, needs an exception, fine, second time, you know, come on now. Third time...
Well, people, people get injuries. Not everybody has like...
Call your neighbor.
People live by themselves.
Call your neighbor. Get somebody else to do it. I mean, really, we should be helping each other. That's part of it. There's other ways to make this happen than just say, "I can't do it." I take garbage out for people that were next door to me when I lived on Van Winkle Lane because they weren't able to do it. They weren't there. Put out my bin. Pull my bin in because I'm not going to be home, and I don't want to leave it out on the street. That's what good neighbors are all about.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say first of all that I've had a lot of experience with this. I was the town administrator when we began the recycling, and I'm in favor of, you know, good intentions, but I don't agree with all of this. I think we've got to be very careful on the commercial part, that we don't inadvertently hurt Bristol businesses, and I don't think it's fair to single them out, to charge them more than we need to for what service we provide them. That's one thing. And I'm not in favor of the no-bin, no-barrel. And let me explain a little bit about why that is. You have so far, I believe, increased the recycling by about 4% by your persuasion, and the DPW director suggests that maybe you could get another 4% by the no-bin, no-barrel. But you've got to be very careful about applying common sense to this. Now, earlier in this meeting, we honored John and Joe, who worked for a long time for the DPW. During my time as town administrator, they were on the trash pickup, and then people progressed to something else there. One of the things we do the best in this town is the trash pickup. I love seeing these trucks come along, and the guys jumping off, grabbing a barrel, throwing it in, the truck hardly stops, and they jump back on, they go ahead to the next spot. But we had a proposal before the council a few years ago that maybe as the town grows, and maybe as the burden of trash pickup gets to be too much, we're going to have to get another packer. You know, one of the problems with public laws, which you can see in the federal level, the state level, and the town level is, is very obvious to look at possible money-saving, $50, $100,000. But very often, there's a secondary effect that nobody thinks about at the beginning of such an innovation, which could cost a million dollars. Supposing this new operation slowed everything down, not only would it have the disadvantage that some rubbish wouldn't be picked up, and you wonder what's going to happen to it, but suppose it slowed down the process by 5% or 10%, and caused us in a few years to have to get another whole packer, another whole crew of three, that could cost a million dollars. That's an example of how good intentions, calculated benefits, can have with them secondary effects that are not even thought of when you first of all invoke such a provision. We've got to think of that. We've got to apply common sense to this. And I wonder a little bit about your remarks about the apartment buildings. I own a few of them. I can't control my tenants that every one of four is going to put out a recycling container. What do you expect DPW to do, to come along and say that, "Well, I think there might be four apartments there, and I only see three containers, therefore, I'm going to leave all the rubbish." Those common sense elements not only are part of the process and has to come, but secondly, who in the trucks that now rush by, they pick up the barrels, toss them in, go to the next one, who's going to stop and make those judgments? And if they do stop and make those judgments, is that going to hold up the process in the, to the extent that raises the aura of what I suggest, we have to get another whole crew to have three running around Bristol instead of two? So, I don't believe the no-bin, no-barrel is a good idea. I think your persuasion that you exerted and more of that is the right way. Let's persuade, and let's not coerce people.
Councilman, if I just may, we've been trying to persuade people for two and a half years, and we've gotten 4%. I don't think we can get much more than that with persuasion.
How much more are you going to get from the bin and barrel?
4%. And we believe 4% from the commercial accounts, that's on a pure estimate, pure estimate. We, we made an assumption.
The commercial account you compared to is...
Let me just, if you would, let me finish my statement.
Gentlemen, one at a time, please.
The commercial part I thought was strictly financial. I didn't know that that was recycling.
Of course, if that...
No, this first item in your list.
Correct. If you take that waste out of our residential collection, our residential tipping fees go down.
Well, that's fine. I'm in agreement with that.
That's what the commercial, that's what that's about.
It will take longer for it to...
That's what that, that's about. It will increase our recycling by reducing our, our waste. They work in inverse proportion to other. The less waste you have, the higher your recycling becomes.
That's all fine, that part.
But the only, the only thing I would say on your concerns about the no-bin, no-barrel in a multifamily unit, you'd have to put it in the lease. You'd have to pass it on to your tenant and say, "As part of your lease, you have to recycle." That's all. And people sign a lease, they become responsible for their actions as a result of that.
But Halsey makes a good point. But he makes a good point on, which I hadn't thought about, like, if you don't know how many units are in that apartment building, so you're just saying for every trash bag and/or barrel, there needs to be a recycling, and it doesn't really matter?
No, no. We'd have to understand that at that address, there are four units, and we believe we could work with the tax assessors department, and we would be able to get that information. And we would then communicate very specifically and very directly to the landlords, the owners. A different letter than the letter that's going to go to my neighbor who lives in a single residence. We can identify those people, and we can communicate.
What would you recommend now, supposing there's an apartment house with four apartments? Suppose there's a bunch of barrels out there, you don't normally know which apartment provided which barrel, and supposing there are three recycling bins and not four? Are you going to leave all that trash there?
No.
What would you do?
You, first of all, ask your people. A lot of people, if you look at people's trash bins, they put their address on it. I know my daughter, who owns a condominium up on the east side of Providence, which also has no-bin, no-barrel, all the residents, they put their address, the apartment number on their barrels, so it's very clear to the guy who's picking it up. I got a four and a four, that's good. A three, but no three.
But do you want, do you want these guys to now run, grab, toss, keep going? Do you want them to stop and read all that stuff?
Over a short period of time, it will become so automatic and so easy. All we're asking is, they're going to, there'll be a transition, of course there will be.
Let me just say in summary...
Halsey, you do more today than you did five years ago, I guarantee it. Why? Because you grew in it.
Let me just say in summary that I think you're leading us into something that will end up being the problem, and I think you've got to apply common sense to it and not be so dogmatic, and you've got to think about how good the trash pickup is right now, and that's why we only have the number of packers that we do have and the number of employees that we have. So, I'd say be careful about this one.
Thank you, sir. I agree, I will. Councilman Stewart?
Kristen Littlefield, again, Resource Recovery. I just wanted to speak sort of on behalf of what I believe all the other cities and towns have done who have no-bin, no-barrel. In the case of a four-unit apartment building, whatever they have for trash barrels out, if there's two trash barrels, there has to be two recycling bins. So, it's not making every single unit, because great for them if they're using two trash barrels in this four units, you know what I mean? They're not throwing away as much trash. And I don't think anyone's had any increase in, you know, having to add trucking and labor from what I understand, so you're going to be recycling more, throwing less trash away, so it should even out as far as staff. I don't think anyone's ever had to take a trash truck and convert it to a recycling truck, or take a recycling truck and convert it to a trash truck. I think everyone's pretty much kept the same operations going, so.
So, they don't have to match? I mean, that was my, that was my question. I mean, you know, unit one and unit one don't have to match. If there's two bags, two barrels, two barrels and two bins, it doesn't matter which units they're from.
That's what I think, yeah. It's just, you know, if...
That's not what Keith answered, though.
Yeah, it's just making sure that there's enough, you know, recycling out, and everyone's making an effort, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was interesting, when we were in East Providence, the, when we were looking at the DPW, the guys did know each home. They knew, and they actually, you know, when there was, some people put tires in these huge, you know, carts, and they would take a picture, and they would, they knew right away what the address was, who the serial number, everything, but each of the guys seemed to know, they know their route very well, they know the houses, they know the units, they work the streets, and they, they know what to do. So, I don't think it's, it's not going to be difficult. It's not going to be a hard transition at all. all. And at the end of the day, we can't keep things as they are. We owe it to our residents to save tax dollars and to do the right thing with our tax money. We cannot, we have to get ahead of this $65 a ton. And we need to, I really firmly believe this is a nice gentle step forward to capture that extra 4%. But I'm sorry, Ed, you wanted to say something?
You said it very well, Councilman Sweeney, about we can't just stay idle and do nothing. If we stayed at the current state without doing anything, to be scary like the millions for the roads, what is that number with the $65 if it was right now? What will we be paying as Director McBride conveyed to the public on our tipping fees? So every year, if we're going to spend tax dollars on those tipping fees without doing anything, and I want to thank you, Councilman, Jim Maloney, and your committee that's here tonight for your hard work accordingly with this and these modest changes. So with these changes, does it help? Yes. I have been vocal, Councilman Sweeney knows this, and my colleagues. DPW is kind of strapped to a workforce in a lot of projects. Going forward, it's just like anything, like an investment. And numbers matter. So if you plug in numbers of not doing anything and going with the norm, getting hit with the $65 and every year, we pay Rhode Island Resource from the tax dollars versus doing things and allocating money towards the trucks that are needed, the no bin, no barrel is a step for 4%. But I'm an advocate for the future of the town of Bristol to be like the leaders like Middletown and other cities that have the trucks like Warwick, that are one-man operations, that have the barrels that are needed, which we're talking a million dollar cost and outfit in our trucks or new trucks will be up at $2 million. So do $2 million of an investment versus doing nothing for a 10-year, 15-year span, paying tipping fees, and cross compare the money of the tax dollars. What is going to be more valuable? We can not reduce the workforce, but when we get to that point, it'll be a one-man operation and utilize the other workforce to do the other projects that are needed in the town. So that's my forecast of my belief of support, but also where this town has to be forecifled to the end of what we need to do and convey it to the residents of Bristol. Less trash means less tipping fees. In the meantime, you're doing more recycling. With the current bin you have, I feel you need to give people the tools. I think if they had a 90-gallon barrel, they would fill the 90-gallon barrel and then have less trash, you know, in the other barrel. But we're not at that juncture yet. I know it's a long haul, but again, numbers speak volumes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just have a question about the numbers, though, because I'm not advocating doing nothing, but there's multiple ideas on here. So if you are, are you saying that overall we're going to increase by 4%? Are you saying that commercial is, would be 2% or 3% and then no bin, no barrel would be 4%, so it's 7%?
We're saying 4% and 4% by our estimates. And remember that once you hit 24%, then you get, 25%, you get an additional dollar in the rebate. So on your recycling rebate. So it works both ways. The higher up you go, you get to 30, you get to 30% and you get $2. So it escalates as you go higher. This is a step in the right direction.
But I mean, just the, just the commercial is going to get you at least 3%?
Well, we say 4.
Right, okay, but at least something.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. And just to answer the direct question from Ed, very, you know, high level, the actual expense for 2015 was $225,000. So if you double the fees from 32 to 65, it's going to go to 450 or higher.
Exactly.
There you go.
So take that amount by the year, and if I just may add, that if we ever get to the point, and I'm on record for saying not reducing the personnel at DPW, but if it ever got to the point of the investment of the trucks that are needed for the 90-gallon barrels, then you're freeing up four employees with their benefits, is $300,000 a year. So you take that money and you have to put it into the picture. And that's what I mean by plugging in the numbers, to come out ahead to the initial, you know, end that we need. So, that's all.
Did you want to?
I was going to start making a motion.
Okay, so, let's put a nice big bow on this. There's a lot of information and there were some real concerns brought up tonight and they need to be addressed directly. One of them was talking about if you do this, then that happens, right? There's an effect and then there's a direct other effect to those changes. It doesn't mean we don't do it, another point that was brought up, which is we can't continue to do what we do. Fact. Two is that I think we need to, there's been a massive amount of effort put into the education part of it. I was sitting with four gentlemen on Monday night who are all 70-plus years old. And I said to them, "Well, you can throw that out." And they looked at me and go, "I didn't know that." "But you can put that in the recycling bin?" "I didn't know that." And Councilman Stewart brought up that good point, which is, it's not about the recycling, stay with me on this, it's not about the recycling, it's about the trash. Trash is the avenue to throw, excuse me, recycling is the avenue to throw away less trash. So we need to help people. For example, I bought some bookshelves a couple of days ago, big things in the cardboard and it came with styrofoam. What do I do with the styrofoam? And I know there's hundreds of people just like me that said, "Can I put that in the recycle bin? What happens if I put it in the recycle..." But see what you're doing right now? You know the answer to that question. I know there's thousands of people who don't. That's not a reflection on your lack of efforts, but it is what we need to do. We need to change, there's an old saying with racing, which is, it's where the rubber meets the road. That, the biggest, wildest car with the biggest motor in the world means nothing. It's that small patch. It's that point in which I've got this bottle in my hand and I make a choice to either put it in the blue bin, or even better one, if the trash is right here and the blue bin's over there, I gotta, I have to walk over there. I get in my car and I put my seatbelt on because I have to put my seatbelt on. I am naked without my seatbelt. We need to get that way with recycling. We also then need to help people understand that when you're out purchasing something, like I did, when I bought bookshelves, and make a conscious decision to say, "Do I need all that packaging? Can I get something else that has less packaging in it?" And that's, I think that's also a big point, too, which is, the $225,000, if I throw away 10 bags this year, I throw away 20, it doesn't change what I'm being charged. So there's no real reason to change my attitude on anything because there's no effect. When we change taxes a little bit, it's a big picture. It's not just recycling. It's not just trash. It's not just this. So I think we need to change that, too, is help people understand that. I'm for changes. I have concerns, they've already been expressed. The no bin, no barrel makes sense to me, but we do need to work on if I'm, if I put my bin out with my trash, the trash guy comes, the recycle guy comes, why I bring my bin inside, oop, they're not going to take my trash now. We need to deal with those real issues because if we send guys back around three and four times, we lost all the money we saved. So...
Or if you get contaminated, you know, aren't they rejected if there's things in there that are not supposed to be in?
We have them rejected. There are loads that are rejected, but we are not. Why? Because the guys in our trucks, in fact, take things out that aren't supposed to be in.
So, to the earlier point, too, that was made, that there are ramifications to all actions. We go with a larger bin. We need to make sure people understand that you put something in there that we can't see. It ruins it for the whole class, if you will. So, these make sense. We cannot just stay stagnant because these numbers go up for no benefit to us. All we do is pay more to do exactly what we do right now. There's no reason to do that. We need to change. So I, like all of my colleagues, commend you for your hard work that you put into this. It needs some flushing out on some things. That doesn't mean that it wasn't a great presentation. There's a lot of salient points in here, but there are some concerns that need to be addressed. And so we can all be on board on what those changes are actually made. But I know Councilman Sweeney wants to close this up.
No, I just wanted to say, you know, JFK said, "We do things not because they are easy, it's because they are hard." And I think we, the recycling committee has done, we've taken a deep dive into Bristol's recycling habits and where we're going and where we need to go for the future. And with the support of the town administrator and the DPW director, I think we can, we will get there. And with that said, I'd like to make a motion to move this ordinance to the first reading with the recycling coordinator removed from the current ordinance. And with that said, that will allow us to get to the next steps, start getting ahead of the $65 a ton and doing the right thing for the town and for the tax dollars and the environment.
I'll second the motion, but I do believe that there's probably some concerns, as I heard tonight. So I, I think maybe the changes could be modified during the first reading. I don't know how my colleagues feel, but moving an ordinance forward and after the hard work, I support it. But we need to discuss any changes and concerns that were discussed here tonight to make that final outcome for that ordinance, so.
I'd like to inject a procedural question here. I don't consider that memorandum from about this to be suitable for a first reading. You've got to have an ordinance before you can have a first reading. That's not...
I think what I heard, Halsey, was just suggesting that it should be moved so our next meeting would have a first reading, not to have a first reading this evening.
You're asking, you're asking for the ordinance to be written at that point. We could submit it as a first reading.
I think it needs change, I think it needs some, like, tweaking up, myself.
I believe Councilman Sweeney just suggested that, you know, the work has been done after all this time on an ordinance being crafted pertaining to recycling. And all the concerns were heard tonight, so now let's, amongst ourselves, collectively, kind of draft it in its formal state to go towards a first reading so we can move forward with it.
Okay. Well, I just don't think a vote on that is necessary. I mean, we all have understood that this is a proposal and that there's been a request that the solicitors write an ordinance. And when they do, when they bring it forward, we can have a first reading.
Bless you. So, so what I'm hearing is a concern is just, should we have a more, should we have a more clear ordinance or one that maybe closer reflects the concerns that have already been expressed before it's a first reading? Is that what you're saying, Halsey?
That's what I'm thinking, yes. I think we've got to have something that's real indefinite before we have a first reading.
15 pages on how to throw away trash.
Okay.
Well, I can amend my motion if that's how my colleagues feel. Are they open to that? Mary? Ed?
Pardon me? I said, there's 15 pages on how to throw away trash.
What was that, Councilman?
In recycling.
Well, I was going to amend my motion, motion to continue this, clean up the ordinance, bring it back for you guys for review. And then I would, I would hope that we can move it to the first reading.
Sounds good. I'll second that motion.
So there's, Andy?
Yes.
Before you, discussion. Because obviously you're going to be turning to us as well as administrator and recycling committee about tweaking...
Why would we involve you on an ordinance?
So I want to understand what we're doing. And I have had a good deal of experience in this, in other communities that went actually, two steps. One, step one, no bin, no barrel, and then step two, pay as you throw, which is probably where the entire state of Rhode Island is going to be in a couple of years anyway. This is probably going to be an interim one. But just on the ordinance, I hear a lot of concerns about the flexibility and so forth. And one of the suggestions I'd like to say is maybe that we take a lot of that stuff about instructions on how to throw out your trash and replace it with a sentence in the ordinance that gives the director the authority to promulgate regulations. And then we give you a separate document of the regulations. But that way, the ordinance would be a bit simpler and then the director will have more flexibility going forward if it's a regulation needs to make changes to do it.
I like the idea. So how about if, how about if we do this as opposed to taking the next step on this? Why don't we get a motion to refer this to the solicitor and the administrator and have the recycling committee involved to propose a ordinance that is cleaned up from what is in front of us and we can have it for our next council meeting? So refer it to the solicitor and the others to, to create an ordinance that we can have a first reading on our next meeting. Is that okay?
So, yes, so moved.
Okay.
All right. This is my last time. I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion before we do that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
So let's, let's end this on a positive, because that sounded negative. On the positive end of things, thank you again for all of your hard work, to all of you. This is wonderful and we're going to take some, some steps to make this a better place. Thanks.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, also from Councilman Stewart regarding the Capital Project Commission.
I'd like to just to discuss with the administration, department heads, and my colleagues, we have been discussing reports from the Maritime Center, which the Capital Projects Commission has been actively involved. And it's a good group of people with their backgrounds that apply some oversight and some checks and balances. This commission was passed through our charter by the public when it was presented to the public on an election. And since its formation and now that they're active, I just want my colleagues to be aware that we do have large projects that are pending outside the Maritime. So I just don't want to see the commission go to the wayside after Maritime Center. But we have roads that have to be done. We have a new lighting program. We have the Prudence Ferry Dock. We have major changes of pending projects going forward. So I just want my colleagues to understand that we should really implement this commission to their capacity and use them for that oversight and transparency the way they should on behalf of the taxpayers and administration in this council. That's all. I just wanted to remind people of this commission.
Councilman Stewart, I think it's an excellent idea. I mean, it's definitely a good set of eyes and double-check and dot our i's across our t's.
And have they been working good so far on their first initial project with the Maritime Center? Yeah, okay.
Your microphone wasn't on. I'm going to say that again for you, which was, great committee, great job, right?
We've been really pleased with this group. They're a wonderful group of people and they all have really good questions and a lot of good, good information just to offer to the process, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, what's your pleasure, Councilman?
Just to receive and file, I just wanted to have that conversation, just so if things happen and they're not included, it's on record that we did discuss and this commission is active and part of one of our groups.
Well, put...
Second?
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next item from the Director of Community Development regarding, maybe to qualify this a little further, it went under the subheading of directing community development, but this is just kind of follow-up on a couple of discussions that took place at the last council meeting. And this was sort of a place to, to catch it so that it would follow on. This has to do with the proposed new hotel and Maritime Center.
Diane, would you take the Maritime Center? And Julie, of course, with Maritime Center?
So I'm really happy to report that since the last council meeting, we have received the State Historic Preservation Commission approval.
Spectacular.
And we are moving forward. And we did actually have a CPC meeting on Monday this week and...
CPC being Capital Projects...
I'm sorry, Capital Project Committee, yes. The wonderful Capital Project Committee that we've been working with. We met on Monday. And we became aware that this project might benefit by an additional grant that we also recently found out about. And it is not on your agenda tonight. And I think that it's something that you would want to weigh in on. So I'm, I'm asking if you would consider having a special meeting. It's, the deadline is August 14th. So I know it's a tight turnaround and, but I just wanted to ask, I figured I would ask and, you know, we'll see.
If there was an additional grant, would that have to be a matching grant?
Yes.
Well, that's the trap of it because...
Right.
A lot of people in Bristol are critical of this whole project because where we got an $800,000 grant, we automatically had to authorize $800,000. And I'm not so sure that that criticism would be silenced by taking another grant and another match.
Interestingly, Halsey...
I didn't realize that this project was over.
Diane and I spoke a little bit earlier today and I expressed that exact same thing.
Right.
And it seemed appropriate to me that if we wanted to take or consider this grant, that we should have a meeting and if my colleagues are obviously amenable to it, that we should have a meeting and discuss this and decide whether or not we think it's appropriate or not. Those objections, I've heard the same thing. The flip, though, is also, of course, that I've heard some, this opens the door to expanding our marina behind Robin Rug, which is of course a revenue stream. But that doesn't change the fact of the objections that Halsey's... change the fact of the objections that Halsey's already mentioned.
Right.
So we need to address those things.
Right.
And both the positives and the negatives, it seemed appropriate to at least have a meeting to talk about it.
Right, and I just thought it was a good opportunity to ask if you would indulge me in that.
But you need that soon, because you want to get more than the application.
Right, and that was the other reason I felt I needed to ask for the special meeting tonight, if you're willing, because we really only have next week to do it. But, you know, regardless of that part of the project, everything else is moving forward. You know, everything else is full steam ahead, and so we're really excited about.
But along the lines of what the chairman has just said, which I totally agree with, I think it'd be good if the council could get a report on the current finances of the $1.6 million project and the prospect for a necessity of an overrun, or is it going to be within budget?
Right.
Could that report come to the council in three weeks?
Yes. Right.
Yeah, quick.
So the latest our next meeting and potentially at a special meeting if we decide to do so.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
So Diane, if we do have a meeting, you know, next week, is it possible for you to send us a very brief summary of what this grant, the title of it, is it a state grant or a federal grant?
It's a state grant. It's one of the state capital grants for historic buildings. It's actually the same grant that we got in '07 to fix the east wall.
Oh, okay.
And so I won't get into more of it now, because it's not really on your agenda, but I just thought I would ask.
It gives like a brief summary of it, so that we would just know what it's about when we came in here.
Okay.
And like how much the match is. Sometimes it's, you know, dollar for dollar, sometimes it's 50%, 25%, 10%.
I'll put it together for you and kind of the scope of the project that we're, or the scope of the work that we would hope to do.
Just brief. It doesn't have to be like the whole thing, just to like go some bullets.
All right, good.
Perhaps if the council does wish to have a meeting next week, that can be the agenda item that can be provided to you.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
And then, of course, prior to the meeting, so we can have some time to peruse it.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I want, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject for a moment in this discussion. We have with us a prestoian who is a wonderful resource in this area and who maybe can help and contribute some ideas to that discussion. I'm talking about Don Sarason. Don has been involved in multitudes of these grant situations over the years and specifically has contact with people, the new people that are involved in granting grants in the state, and maybe he could contribute something to this discussion if he was invited to join you.
Everyone is invited to join. So absolutely, it would be a public meeting, and there would be public input if it was appropriate, and it sounds like it might be, so.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
The other portion of this agenda item had to do with the hotel, I'm sorry, the proposed hotel on Gooding Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
We going to have the meeting?
I think we should.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, can we maybe agree on that now, so?
I didn't know we wanted to do it now, but that's fine with me.
If you don't mind, because it's...
I'm going to bring my calendar, so I might be sure. I have nothing to do with that.
How's Tuesday for everybody?
Tuesday, the 4th.
Thursday's my preferred night, if that works for you. If not, Julie can cover for me.
Is Thursday okay with everybody?
Seven.
Well, I don't know, if it's due the 14th, then next Thursday is like something like the 5th or the 6th.
The 7th.
Yeah, so wouldn't you want it like earlier in the week? Maybe we could do it a little earlier in the evening?
Monday?
I mean, I don't know. Wouldn't you want it sooner?
Yeah, I mean...
When can you do it? Thursday?
Thursday's my preferred day, because I'm off Monday, Tuesday, and I have another commitment on Wednesday.
She's off.
Okay.
But I could work on all the other pieces of it and then just wait for the green light on the submission, so.
Okay.
Thank you for thinking of the work, though, that's going to be involved, but I think we'll be okay.
Is everybody available on Thursday?
Yes.
That's the 6th, is it?
That is the 6th. At 7 o'clock?
Do it in here.
And we'll find an appropriate meeting place?
We probably only need that room.
Potentially the Burnside Building. Obviously, it'll be posted, so. Okay, so Thursday...
What if my calendar with me, can you send it up?
Thursday at 7?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Okay, so the other part of this agenda item was the hotel. There was a lot of discussion, and I thought it was very appropriate that we get a couple of things for clarity. Number one was that there was concern expressed about the timeframe that DEM took for approval process. I ended up speaking with the potential owners of the property and asked them for some input on the subject, and what they shared with me is that their goal, if they get DEM approval, would be a 2016 start, shovel start, shovel in the ground, with a 2017 opening. There was a couple of very important disclaimers on that. Number one, this has not been in front of any of our boards or commissions, so there is a clear process that everybody's aware of, including this potential owner, that it needs to go with our planning, it needs to go with zoning, it needs to get DEM approval. DEM approval includes some watershed issues, I should say watershed concerns, probably. There's a lot of people that are downhill from that. There's a lot of people that are affected by that, including the high school is affected by that. There's Dixon and Dartmouth and Naomi and all of that, so DEM is there to make sure that everybody's safe and that these decisions are good decisions, including our boards and commissions. So they are on target, they are on track, they would like some things to go faster, but they're not, but their expectations have been met thus far. Good news. So I figured I would share that with everybody. There is due time. If you are for this project or you are against this project, there will be due time and public open meetings that you'll be able to express your concerns for it or express your happiness about the project, so.
So are you basically saying that all the, like what we've been hearing in terms of the delays with DEM, that they are not like surprised by that, that it's moving forward as best they feel is moving forward?
Correct. Correct. They would like it to go faster, but they are, this met their expectation.
Okay, that's good.
May I?
Please.
May I comment?
Please.
And I do appreciate Mr. Caloro did reach out to me, and we discussed all of this, and I've discussed it with La France Hospitality. They're comfortable with it where it stands now, because it is where it is now. They would have preferred shovel in the ground in '16 and approval last year. It didn't happen, and it's not going to happen now until this fall, and because they've started another project in another state, they obviously couldn't do it now. So with all due respect, the delay was significant enough for them to come up with another project, and yes, it is where it is, and if it's moving along, we'll do it in 2016. And thank goodness, they're staying with it, because we need it, and we all know that.
We do.
What I can say, and certainly we don't want to do a back and forth here, but I had clear conversation with them, and they expressed exactly what I just shared, so I'm sure that they may have shared something else with you, which is very possible.
Seemingly.
So, but at the end of the day, the official, and I asked them if I could share this in public, and they were absolutely comfortable with that. So they're comfortable with it, which was the most important concern, so. So those are the two updates. So all we need is a receive and file on this? Can I have a motion on that?
So move.
Sir? There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item J1. This is bid number 830, the road resurfacing project. There were six submissions. The first from T. Miosi Incorporated of Coventry, the amount of $683,896. The second from Deambra Construction Company of Warwick, the amount of $874,775. Third is Narragansett Improvement Company of Providence, in the amount of $776,975. The fourth, Cardi Corporation of Warwick, $675,625. The fifth, J. H. Lynch &amp; Sons of Cumberland, $937,000 even, and the final, PJ Keating Company of Lunberg, Massachusetts, $928,644.44.
I move this information being conveyed to the town administrator and the DPW head to act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I only heard one aye. Are we all in favor?
I am, yeah.
Okay.
I just maybe want to incline with Julie, too, along the way, as we're talking about money. These bids are crucial for the project that's permitted for, so.
The next item is the professional engineering consultant services for the Prudence Ferry Dock repairs. This is a two-part bid submission. The first is from CDR McGuire Incorporated Providence for the design portion, $87,645 for the construction administration section, $17,730. The second is Child's Engineering Corporation of Bellingham, Massachusetts, the design portion, $65,260. The construction administration, $36,178.40. The third is from GZA Geo-Environmental Incorporated of Providence, the design amount of $59,920. The construction administration portion, $23,640. And the final one from Par Corporation of Lincoln, $71,955 for the design section and the construction administration section, $17,650.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like a clarification.
Thank you. I was just going to ask for it, too, so.
We, what are we planning to do here? Now, we have not, as I understand it, obligated any monies to work on that pier as yet, and so I'm a little curious how this effort to design things is going to fit with an ultimate project.
I thought they were going to come up with what we needed to do and then the cost, isn't that?
Right, that's what I thought, too, Mary.
So this is just for the design of the work that we need to do, and we did it in two parts, because we've got a consultant needed for the design of the work and then possibly bringing that same engineer in for construction administration if we go forward and, you know, do the work, have the work done.
Well, this low bid is about $90,000. Where is that money coming from?
Well, I was, I'll let Julie speak to that. I was...
This would be if the council wants to utilize that $1.6 million of bond money, that's potentially one source of funding for this particular project. It was something that we talked about at the time.
You need part of a bond issue?
Yeah, it was something that we talked about at the time, as we're going to have to assess the priorities. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the safety of that particular area and liability issues, so I think this study could potentially be paid out of there, and then we can determine based on that how much work we need, we, how much of a priority and how much, you know, what the scope of the work should be, how much we need to do to shore up that area, or, I mean, that's going to be council and administration decision, I think.
It just seems to me that we need to provide that guidance to whichever one of these bidders gets this job, because we don't want to give the false impression we're going to send millions and millions of dollars on this. We want to give them some sense of the possible scope, so that they work in a direction that's constructive to us.
I think the scope was pretty clear, and the proposed work area was pretty clear. I mean, if you walk out on that particular dock as you approach the ferry, it is a disrepair. And since we own it, we have the liable, liability in front of us. So I think what we need to do is value engineer that, but we need to fix it. And the proposals that were submitted today were for the design of the repairs and then for the construction administration by that consultant to oversee the construction, but we don't even know what it's going to cost, because they've got to go through the design process, develop the design, and then come forward with detailed cost estimates. In our request for proposals, we told the consultants that we expected a detailed fee cost estimate at the 90% submission and also the final bidding document submission, so that we could come forward to the council to say, hey, look, this is what we're looking at. Here's the proposed improvements, and then, you know, obviously you take it to the next step for approval of funding to do the construction end of it. But we can't even come up with a cost of the repairs without somebody taking a good heart look at that. And it is a complex situation with the ferry operating out of there right now. So I think, you know, all things being considered, we are, you know, danger close if we don't do something to fix that pier pretty soon.
And I respect my colleagues' concerns, Halsey, but we also discussed the key issue is the liability. It's just in disarray right now, more and more, leading up to that, so. And then, like you said, we come to this juncture, and then we have to see where we go with the scope of the project after that.
Right, and this particular proposal is a little bit unique in itself, because it's a qualification-based selection and not just a fee-based selection. And there's a ranking structure within the RFP that went out, that there's points associated with each different thing that each one will be evaluated on. So it isn't necessarily cut and dried a low bidder.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want the council clear on that, and then we'll be sitting down as a team to review those and assess those going forward, to make a final recommendation for a selection. It's different than your road program.
Thank you.
You got that, Eddie? It's different than the road program.
So is there a motion?
Motion to refer to the administration to act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
And the DPW.
And the DPW director.
Include a DPW in that, yeah.
You know, that guy that was talking.
Yeah. Yeah, Tony and the department director.
So there's a motion and a second to refer to the administrator and that guy? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, and...
Couldn't let it go, Mary, sorry.
Finally, item J3 is the Tannyard Park project. That's his bid, 832. There is one bid submitted, Landscaping Services Incorporated of Bristol, the bid amount of $124,259.
I move that we convey this to the town administrator and act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Is there a discussion? I have a quick question. Is that, how much did we put aside to do this park project? Or how much did we think it was going to cost?
In our capital improvement plan, we put $20,000 aside as our 20% match of this. It's about $25,000 is the 25% match, so we're close to, you know, that's coming out of our capital pool of funds that were approved with the budget.
And because it's one bidder, we have the option to negotiate?
Yes.
Okay.
That means what, about 125 is available?
I'm sorry?
The grant plus our part is how much altogether?
The total cost of the project is about $124,000, and our responsibility is 20% of that.
Well, how much was the grant? Because we had a grant for this.
Yes.
$69,000?
The grant amount was...
Eighty thousand five hundred and twenty percent. Eighty, it's an eighty-twenty grant.
Okay, thank you.
But it's not only up to $100,000, right?
No.
Okay.
That's a good ratio.
The grant will cover up $125,000 less 20%, correct? Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if I'm clear. So just for clarity's sake, because we heard a couple of different...
Yep, so Walter, my understanding, and Walter, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the grant, the project authorized under the grant is acceptable at $124,259. If that's our final cost, we would be responsible for 20% of that. So that's approximately $25,000. We have $20,000 already earmarked in our capital improvements program.
So as you started this off, we're really close.
So we might be able to negotiate. We're very close. We may be able to negotiate it down. I'm not sure if there's alternates in that, or if there's anything, we can move on, but Walter will certainly do his best, I'm sure.
Thanks, Walter.
Can we have a bid authorization updated, then, because it's a little different on The bid authorization talks of $69,000.
Can you address Lou's concerns?
Sixty, seventy.
Yeah, whatever's...
That's only fourteen thousand.
I'm sorry, let me be really clear. I'm sorry, let me be really clear. Can you address lose concerns in writing, not right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just update it when you, when you get a chance.
Okay, so is there a motion?
There already was a motion.
And there was a second, and I didn't write it down, so.
Just for discussion, I know Councilman Harrisaw had brought this up a while back, and we're all in great support. It'll be nice to see what that park's gonna look like coming around on 114 or intersect the Wood Street to beautify it the way it should be, so.
Agreed. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the, the next item is the periodic report provided by Alan Klepper, item K1.
Motion to receive and file?
Yep.
Wait a second.
I'll second your receiving file, if you're receiving filing.
We have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is from the Tax Assessor. This is the Citizens Revaluation Committee's draft report.
I asked this not to go into the consent agenda and just be pulled in ahead as a separate item, not because we needed to have discussion about it, just to thank again the Citizens Revaluation Committee for their hard work, and also, if you, and I'm sure we all did, looked through these, the report itself, it was very positive overall. They do express concerns. Both the Citizens Revaluation Committee and Finnegan Brothers expressed some concerns that need improvement, but overall, they felt that the project and the, was very positive. And I thought that was important to share with everyone and not just have it go into the consent agenda.
I agree, Mr. Chairman. I think to get two reports like this is extremely satisfying. We all realize that it's, it's an imperfect process, but to have it go as well as it had, both as indicated by these reports, particularly the one by Finnegan, and also to have such a vast reduction in the number of complaints is, I think, a, a very good indication to how this all came out.
So agreed. So can I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Similarly, report from the assessor regarding the Finnegan Appraisals Report.
Which we covered. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Second? Is there?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And then we have the periodic report provided by Stacy Carter through the administrator's office for June.
Thank you, Stacy.
She has been filed with gratitude for the report.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Also, I just wanna thank Stacy for her dedication to the town, and the town definitely benefited by all her hard work. I know she put in a report, it's, so.
Well put, thank you.
Yep.
Next, we have the individual council member. Agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
We've been here a little bit, so I'm gonna make it real quick. First, I understand today, I didn't know about it, I'm sorry, but we don't have Patrolman Nappy with us anymore? We have Detective Nappy with us now, so congratulations to Detective Nappy. I certainly would've been there, I'm sorry, I didn't know about it. So Emily Sylvia passed away recently. Emily is the grand, excuse me, the great-grandmother of Jen Canario. You're familiar with the last name? It's Josh's wife. Emily was 99 years old. She passed away a few days ago. She was one month shy of being 100, so.
Wow, good for her.
So our hearts and thoughts go out to you and your family, and specifically Jen and her family, so. Last thing I'll leave you with is that I spent a little bit of time with Director McBride last week, by my request. Took a look at some of the issues that have already been talked about tonight with drainage issues. There was specific areas that we're gonna certainly need to spend a lot more time on. I know we have a drainage committee that's doing a wonderful job, but I know that, as I said, we've spent a lot of time this evening talking about that. It's imperative that, that we continue. There's a lot of things that need to be done. There's a lot of roads that looked great six months ago that look horrible today. It's not the, the fault of DPW, it's not the fault of anyone, it's just it was a nasty winter, so. I wanted to, I know that, council, I didn't mention this at your agenda item, but that has been on there since October of 2014. That was the last time that I could find a date that we've been continuing that to discuss the road project, so we definitely need to move forward on this, so. I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney.
Yes, I just wanna compliment the fire department for containing the wood fire on Wood Street in Franklin. They made sure no lives were lost, and I know the police department was there, and they secured the scene, and it was, we were just lucky that nobody was hurt or any lives were lost, so just fortunate for that. Amazing. Just wanted to let everybody know that the Harbor Masters Office and local fishermen are hosting the second annual Bristol Harbor Festival on August 15th from 12 to 8 p.m. There will be a traditional blessing of the fleet, a stuffy competition, live music, a sunset cruise, and two seats for the Little Neck Boyle. The cost of the Little Neck Boyle is $15 per person.
Have tickets available yet?
Yeah, they are. You can, you can contact Greg Marsili at the Harbor Masters Department, or, yeah, you can go through me, I have tickets as well, so.
Can you buy them that day?
Yes.
Okay.
You should be able to buy them that day, no problem. I just wanna also mention, it was what an honor for one of our Bristol Warren teachers, Michelle DeSilva, nationally recognized with a Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. She is the sole math teacher from Rhode Island to win the award, and she will travel to Washington, DC, and before, and to meet President Barack Obama. So it's a real honor to have that teacher in the Bristol Warren Regional Schools Department. We have some great teachers.
Wonderful.
And she's a real great honor. And just finally, my recycling tip, I just wanna let everybody know that glass items can be placed into your recycling bins and bottles and jars. Just remove the lids and place both the lids and the bottles slash jars into the bin. Thank you very much. You guys have a great evening.
Ms. Perella.
Yes, two things. One is, I just wanna wish my mother a happy birthday, which happens to be today, and I know she's watching because we had to cut our dinner short. I had to get here, but she also wanted to make sure she could watch it, so that's... Oh, really? And then also, I just wanted to express my condolences, Andy, to your family so that your father-in-law passed away, and-
Sorry.
So Mr. Lake, who is a Bristol resident, and your wife is, as many people know, is from Bristol, and so please extend to her and her family our condolences. And that's it.
Mr. Stewart.
Well, no, I could, happy birthday, Mrs. Perella. Real quickly, a lot of people have mentioned things that have already been said, but also another event coming up on August 9th. If you haven't been to the Cool Jazz Down Monhope Farm in support of our organization, it's August 9th. It's a good afternoon to bring your family and enjoy some seafood and just the scenic waterfront and the assets of Monhope Farm. You can just go to their website to get that information. And also, just thank Mike Davis and everybody who came out tonight, and everybody tuning in at home, and Sergeant Archie Mans. So, thank you.
Mr. Harrisaw.
I have nothing further.
Before we end, I have good news to leave with. This is a check from the state of Rhode Island. There's three of them. Councilman Stewart's got one, and Councilman Sweeney has one. This, a big thank you goes to our Senate and our House, and more specifically, Representative Ken Marshall. This is the $2,000 grant that I wrote for getting TVs in here, so presentations will be better. This is just a small piece of a grander plan that we all have to make presentations better, sharing the information to the community better, so I'm gonna hand this off to, I believe, you, Tony, so you can put it in its rightful place. For you, Julie, where are you, should I give it to you? So, but I thought that was neat. But there's two more that if my colleagues would share.
Well, this is for you, Walter, and your parks and recreation for Quinta Gamlin, for that meteor television and smart board slash, it's gonna be used very good in that room, so.
Hey, Walter, the money tree hit the community garden because I also have a check here for $500, so keep it sprouting.
Isn't that wonderful?
Isn't that great?
Now, all we need is larger checks from the state towards all our projects.
And bigger money trees.
Thank you.
And thank our reps and senators.
Absolutely.
Town administrator agenda items.
I'll be very quick. Well, it's nice to be back and to be here for the meeting tonight. I went through, withdrew from the last meeting, but interesting enough, I had an opportunity to meet with the, the mayor of the island, and it's only a notion apart, but let me tell you, the issues there, no different than ours. I can tell you, they, they do a better job recycling and trash, though. They certainly do. And really picked up some lessons from that. But other than that, they deal with roads just like we do, believe it or not, they